And everybody else, we could have gone on for hours.
Ladies and gentlemen, like thank you for flying me Milton and the airlines. I'd like to ask you your trade tables and they'll probably lock the vision as we reach climbing flying altitude thirty thousand feet.
Yeah, he does, I see him.
This is um, Tim Bro.
Yeah.
I'm.
Uh huh. He's everywhere.
Is it time yet?
Lots of that, and he like likes to uh, I guess.
He's working tonight.
And. He is a collect.
warmed up this week, didn't it?
He is a collect, yeah. And he'll ask, so what is? He could, and I'll tell him about that show, so I. Don't know, I don't.
You think it's gonna hold again?
I love antique in the fun that.
But.
So uh, we just talk and I.
Yeah, that groundhog said it'll be six more weeks of winter.
Kimberly, yes. Calling them.
You will stop.
Wow.
Remember one night.
Oh, he has real good taste, he is, I'll text him and say, look and see if. It's. That new. Uh, it's. Almost. Yeah. Well, how much? Too much, but let's cut it out. Al. Alf. Alf Arndt. I better put. I gotta text from uh. Okay, now I did too, I went by the.
Claimer, I did not.
No, didn't.
Did you get all the?
What happened now?
Okay.
Have you been to eat at Mason's yet?
Over several times. I've only eaten breakfast. And when I went, times I went at lunch.
Can I do something?
Still eat breakfast.
Oh, really?
All I got. Stop bringing the fake.
It's a pretty good place.
I enjoy this, not in my. Steam of thing.
That's funny.
I don't eat out, but I try not to eat out very often, but. I've eaten.
That's hilarious.
Ever since they opened.
Was this weekend?
Friday. Now, she had, had beef.
Really?
I might still eat. He won't be with me.
I'm bringing on down to those that.
Tried to play. Said our H R A.
What's your mother? Oh, I didn't think Mary felt too good the other day.
Well, we, we went on a, that's on a Friday and came home Monday.
That stuff is rough, isn't it?
Certainly would run in there, do what we wanted and run out, and I told Brian, I was like, I have not.
Right, right, oh, I know it.
We'll do one part a day.
Well, that's whatever, we went, but the kids, they said, oh, I think it's just a psychological thing with this.
I think some people are.
I mean, look, I got all kind of lots, all of. And you know, I hate to say this, but when the pastor.
I've never been in.
And I knew that.
Ladies and gentlemen, like to welcome everybody here to City Hall on this wonderful fifth day of February in the year two thousand eighteen. I am Mayor Meese and this is the Sundial Utilities of Milton Incorporated Board Directors Meeting. Take a look at the agenda, if you don't have one, there's some in the stack at the back of the room. Item one, we have call to order for Sundial Utilities of Milton Inc. Of course, approval of the January minutes. Now, you should have received a copy, uh, board in your packet for review of the January minutes, and that requires a vote for approval.
I move.
Second.
Alright, uh, we got a, uh, a motion from Councilwoman Holly, second from Councilwoman Lowry, discussion. If there is none, please vote. And the motion passed. Uh, it looks like Councilwoman Smith is absent. Alright, um, next up, we have the, uh, approval of the December financial report. You should have received a financial report for the month of December in your packet, and if you haven't had a chance to look over that, please do so. And if, if someone feels confident, make a motion, please do so.
I approve.
Got a motion, motion from Councilwoman Johnson, got a second from Councilman Lowry, discussion. If there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Alright, uh, item four is persons to appear. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak to the Sundial Utilities of Milton Incorporated Board Directors? Is us, uh, about an item pertaining to Sundial Utilities of Milton Incorporated? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address the record, please, and welcome the City of Milton. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council, uh, as you well know, my name is Randy Jones, five four six eight Monterey Road, Crestview, Florida. Uh, I was here last meeting and brought up a situation.
Oh, and just to cut you off, is this, is this meeting, is this, is what you're about to say pertaining to Sundial Utilities of Milton Incorporated?
Oh, I thought, is there another time later?
Yeah, that, that'll be in the regular, this is the executive meeting, this is a separate meeting from that meeting.
Pardon me.
Thank you, that's okay. Uh, anybody else want to speak to us about an item pertaining to Sundial Utilities of Milton Incorporated? Seeing no one wants to talk to us, I'm gonna close out persons to appear. Other business, uh, Brian, are you aware of any other business tonight?
No, sir.
Alright, not aware, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. We will reconvene. In five minutes. Where they had, uh.
I.
They actually showed Crocodile Dundee in the end.
Everything that I do is.
They had all these sophisticated bar commercials and they showed the Jeep commercial at the end, where it just kinda.
Oh, yes, I don't give me that, thank you.
Land drive the car. Some bad, every once in a while, it's painful, they left. But uh.
Since I go on a go.
Getting. Right.
I have eight.
It's a while I can change, it's. Need you but a heck of a day. That was, well, getting. For their.
Heather.
Oh, happy. Was that about it? I was hoping it wasn't a damage. Much. Be. Stop and she. So, stop, kept moving, she. All that beating down the road there. Right. Yeah, me too, I have too, I do all kind of craters. Okay.
But she sounds, yeah.
Talking about, uh, Austin, that he.
It does.
Right. Yes. No problem, that's. Yeah.
I know my dad, whenever I got married. Are you gonna keep her middle name?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, you're not your middle name, you're a maiden.
Oh, really?
I made a name. But I married Hathaway, you know, I was like, I'm not gonna do Heather Way Hathaway.
Terms after a while, I'm sure.
No, he's like, ah, you're right.
I still think they all need another year in school or ROTC or something.
But I really wanna keep my middle name because it's so different.
I thought that was interesting, that's real good. Maybe something might come back one day, years.
Maddie? Fine.
Okay.
Your mom doing well?
Ladies and gentlemen, like to welcome everybody here to City Hall on this wonderful, uh, fifth day of February in the year two thousand eighteen. I am Mayor Meese and this is the Executive Committee Meeting of the Milton City Council. According to my watch, I have five forty in the afternoon, and so we're gonna kick off this meeting. And of course, we have approval of the agenda, uh, for additional items, so, uh, Council, do you have anything you'd like to add to the agenda tonight? Or staff, if so, uh, please, uh, say so now, anybody have anything they wanna add?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually have two things, um, one is gonna be about administration, and then the other one is just a follow-up.
Okay, so what we'll do is, um, if you look on page six of your packet, um, we'll put that under, uh, council reports. Under Hathaway, Councilwoman Hathaway. And, uh, whenever we get to that point, uh, you can address those two issues.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, anybody else?
Uh, yes, sir, you do have, uh, there is a, uh, additional agenda package provided by staff, uh, an issue concerning a resolution concerning the reduced permit fees for the re permitting of the wastewater treatment.
Okay, and everybody has received that, so that's good. Um, anybody else have anything they'd like to add to the agenda tonight?
The Main Street Milton West.
I.
Cause I, I, I did.
Think I saw something, yeah, first, second page.
Oh, okay.
First item, yep, first item after the first page.
I read it.
Alright, uh, do we have a motion to, to approve, uh, the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilwoman Lowry, second from Councilwoman Hathaway, discussion. If there is none, please vote. Yep. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, I'm not aware of any public hearings or, or meetings tonight, uh, or any recognition, special presentations, and awards, uh, nothing of that nature. Uh, we do have an invited speaker at this time, and of course, uh, Ms. Carolyn Cole from the League of Women Voters, so, uh, Carolyn, welcome to the City of Milton.
I don't live in Milton, I live in Holly.
If you can pull the mic down just a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm co-chair of the Natural Resources Committee of the League of Women Voters, and about two years ago, we decided to study plastics, we were looking at plastic bags more than anything, and I hope, you know, you've probably never been interested in plastic before, but I hope I stir your interest up a little bit, and here we go. The thing about plastic is that it never goes away, the Styrofoam cup that you had your coffee in is here forever somewhere. And it's a wonderful thing, but three hundred million tons, tons, are produced each year with eight million of the three hundred million ending up in the ocean each year. Worldwide, five hundred billion plastic bags are consumed annually, and in the U.S., a hundred and two billion plastic bags each year. And why is that a problem, and the first one is that it, they use up non-renewable, renewable resources. Twelve million barrels of oil are consumed in the U.S. to make the bags used each year. Each, it, it's easy to take home fourteen bags each week. A plastic bag takes twenty to a thousand years to degrade, that's to degrade, ends up either in the atmosphere or in the soil or in the water after some point, and it's becoming a worldwide problem. Plastic bags jam machinery at recycling centers and landfills, they interfere with drain, storm drain systems. Plastic bags are the fourth most litter found on beaches, and more than one million birds and a hundred thousand marine animals die each year from discarded plastic bags. Sea turtles often mistake plastic bags for their favorite food, jellyfish, and more than fifty percent have been found with plastic bags in their stomachs, a watched jump whale was found to starve to death because of the thirty plastic bags in its gut. Worldwide, only one percent are recycled, in the U.S., five percent, and it's estimated in Florida, twelve percent are recycled or repurposed. Single-use plastic bags litter clogged flood control systems and breed mosquitoes. After storm drains were plugged with plastic bags, it's excreting flooding in Bangladesh, it became the first country to ban the plastic bag. We're talking about single-use plastic bags. Other countries have done things, fifteen African countries, seven Asian, several Australian states, five European, and four, uh, South American countries have done, put some sort of restriction or bans on these plastic bags. After San Jose, California banned the bag, litter was reduced eighty-nine percent in storm drains and sixty percent in the river. In Ireland, litter was reduced ninety-five percent after a cha, a charge was placed on the plastic bags. But in Florida, the legislature has preempted any city municipality from placing any sort of restriction on plastic bags. They did that in two thousand and eight, and they said, okay, D E P, you go study this and see if it really is a problem. The D E P came back and said, indeed, it is a problem, but the legislature has not changed their minds, it's still, still Milton could not put any restrictions on any plastic bags. Uh, and, um, over thirty municipalities in Florida have signed resolutions asking the legislature to put the power back into localities. When I gave this speech in, um, the City Council of Pensacola, they came up with a resolution. E C U A has come up with a resolution because they are tired of these things jamming the recycling, jamming the landfill machinery, and, uh, this can be a board of accounting commissions also has a, uh, resolution. And in this packet, I have a copy of the statute, I have a copy of the D E P summary that comes back and says, indeed, we need to do something about this. And I have the name of two bills that are sitting on the floor in the legislature now, they're not moving, and every year, every year, in the House and in the Senate, there's, there are bills written to change this, to, you know, to lift this preemption, and they just don't go very far. Anyway, there's copies of those, a copy of the Pensacola resolution, a sample resolution, and a list of cities in Florida that have signed resolutions asking that this be returned to the cities. And I'm leaving this with you, and the reason why I don't have a copy for everybody is that my computer is not speaking to my printer.
They're not on speaker.
I'm sorry about that, because I'm sure that you will want to see this.
Alright, well, what we'll do is, uh, we'll make sure that everybody gets a copy, and I think, uh, if it's okay with the council, um, what we can do is we can address this issue in detail at, uh, me at the hole coming up this month, and like, I, I think, I'm with you on this, I think it's inevitable, uh, that eventually, what's gonna happen, uh, is, you know, we'll, we'll go from a, a, a system where you, you know, we, we all have the plastic bags in every store, but it'll be either bringing your own cloth bags, or they'll have. Oh, you brought us one.
Everybody wants.
Right.
So we have given out about eight hundred of these.
Okay. Thanks.
So it's, you know, it really is.
Can you go back to the mic, ma'am?
Nasty little boogers, so, uh, I hope that you take those and use them and you'll be happy, you don't have all those plastic bags.
Can I ask you a question, just, uh, for, uh, knowledge, what, what are the, uh, the areas that have, have, uh, introduced this type of plan? What are they using for the trash bags now? Uh, what are they supplementing, the replacement for trash bags?
You know what, when I grew up, we didn't have plastic in our, in our trash bags.
Right, so paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or nothing, you know, we, we can go back to those days, we're using up our natural resources on single-use plastic bags. So, that's.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was some new innovation that they've come up.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Any more questions?
We used a burn barrel.
That works too, doesn't it?
Not in the city.
Alright.
Weekend ends.
Yeah, well, thank you for letting me speak, and if you have any questions, I have a card there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Cole, for coming and speaking to us, and you're welcome anytime, if you wanna come give us an update on what the League of Women Voters are doing in the community. Uh, we're, you're always wel, welcome here at the city, and again, if anybody in the audience would like a, uh, a souvenir to take home tonight, uh, we have the bags here, she's provided them, so, uh. Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, um, we've got a pretty, a pretty lengthy agenda here tonight, and I do know that, uh, uh, Mr. Jones has filled out a request form, so if it's okay with the council, I'm gonna let Mr. Jones come and speak, um, and have his time, and, uh, and then we'll get on with the regular agenda.
Okay, I apologize again early for earlier, uh, good evening, Council, uh, as you know, my name is Randy Jones, five four six eight Monterey Road, I'm sure everyone's aware of who I am. Uh, I was here January the eighteenth, and, uh, I said what I needed to say, and then Chief Tony Tindall got up and said what he needed to say. If I may, right now, I know Chief Tindall made the comment that his two officers had all this woman's information. At this point in time.
V one being unidentified and leaving the scene.
Yes.
This is from the I A investigation, this is Officer Daylon Wilson's statement.
And what was said to Mr. Jones, who was the driver of V two, what was said to him in reference to his concern?
Well, when I got to the hospital, Officer Aguirre was already in the room speaking with him. And so as I, as I got there, I just walked up to the room and I stood in the doorway, and I just listened to the context of their conversation. And during the context of their conversation, that's when I first learned that the woman that was involved in this, uh, traffic crash, the female V one operator left the scene without providing information. As I was standing in the doorway listening, that was, I guess what was, Officer Aguirre was trying to explain to the guy the, the operator vehicle two. She was trying to explain to him that, you know, the lady had left, and without providing the information. And as I was listening to her talk and then listening to the guy, you know, feedback, you know, give feedback to her, I noticed she was having a, a hard time trying to try to get through to the guy. In other words, he was, he was, uh, he was not having anything to do with what she was, what was trying to tell him. He wasn't, he wasn't satisfied, or he wasn't pleased with the information that she was giving him.
Did you ever speak to Mr. Jones?
Yes, I did.
What was the context of your conversation with him?
Well, as I noticed, she was having a hard time, uh, you know, with her dialogue with him. You know, they weren't really getting anywhere, I decided to, uh, to speak up and to try to comfort him as far as, uh, you know, I let him know that, that even though the lady left without giving him any information, that we could find out who she was because Jim Spencer showed up on scene and told me who he was, told me he was a friend of hers, and based on that information, we knew, I knew that we could get ahold of him, you know, who the, the driver was, based on Jim Spencer with the Sheriff's Department, a friend of hers, it would be easy to contact him to find out who she was. So, I tried to, you know, relay that to the, to the driver of vehicle two, and, uh, he wasn't pleased with that answer. So he, you know, he, he was upset the whole time, and, uh, you know, I, I tried to comfort him, I was telling him, you know, it was just an accident, it wasn't done on purpose, there's no criminal intent involved here, it's just, it's just an accident. And I think I explained to him that sometimes on these traffic crash scenes, things are so hectic, it's kinda hard for us sometimes to control the whole situation. So I was explaining to him that sometimes, you know, these things can happen, where somebody can wander off, and we don't know who they are.
And we don't know who they are.
And I believe that was the context of my conversation with him, but I tried to reassure him that this was not gonna be one of those cases, we could find out who she was because, and I do believe I used his name, Jim Spencer, when I told him, I did let him know, I, I do believe I used Jim Spencer's name. That he is the second in charge of the Sheriff's Department, and we can get in contact with him later on, and we can find out who she was, since he told me she was a friend of his on scene.
Know who she was.
Huh?
Did you ever tell Mr. Jones, the driver, uh, I'm sorry, did you ever tell Mr. Jones that the driver of V one was with a high-ranking law enforcement official, words to that effect?
Well, I did tell him that, you know, Jim Spencer was the second in charge of the Sheriff's Department, and we knew who he was, and we knew that we could contact him to find out who the driver was.
Huh?
And at this point in time, you know, I still don't know how, you know, where the woman, who the woman, you know, who the vehicle, who the driver of vehicle one left with, I don't know who took her home, I don't know anything, you know, I just, when I got to the hospital, that's the first time I was informed that she didn't, that Officer Aguirre did not have the lady's information, which I, I was kinda shocked. You know, based, based on her tale, you know, I figured she'd have got all the information before we left the scene.
Who was present?
That's about the time Mike Klein cuts him off and, uh, and doesn't, uh, let him finish. Uh, a few more things I want to address, uh, are you, are you all familiar, well, real quick, I, I noticed, uh, Councilman Powell, Councilman Snow, what are y'all doing right now? You're taking notes? Okay, wouldn't you expect a police officer going to the scene of an accident to take notes? They're not gonna do it from memory, I've got the woman's notes, and I've got her testimony, nowhere in her notes is that woman's name mentioned, her driver's license man, mentioned, nothing. Kimberly Aguirre, I'm gonna be honest, is such a neurotic mess, that she finally came to the fact that she said that she had the woman's license plate number. Now, are you, are you folks familiar with what the guarantee rights are? You have to, if you're gonna interview a police officer, you have to tell them what's going on and everything else. In this, they also announced the charges being brought to them, there were three. One was failure to gather information, one was calling somebody to go to the hospital, the other, the third one, was disrespect to a citizen. Now, Tony Tindall stood up here last meeting and said that he verbally counseled them two officers, cause he felt that it was needed. But how come in this, in this internal affairs investigation, it doesn't show? Affairs investigation, it doesn't show? There's o- only two shows up in there. Now, he goes on to talk about this FDLE paperwork, that, and it's their choice on how they fill this out, there was no evidence to misconduct. That statement doesn't say nothing about evidence, it just says there's an accusation. And that was done four months before the report was over with. How do you know, if you haven't even done the investigation yet? There's been a deal made, and I don't, I don't know what's going on here. Uh, I, I, I'm at my wit's end, and, and to stand up and say, and I know, Mayor, you said you've gotta put your faith in your hired officials, but I think it's high time that you, counsel, and the City of Milton understands where they're putting their faith. Tony Tindall sidestepped Dalen Wilson, he put that on the previous police chief. Let me show you something else. This happened a month and a day after my accident. Tony Tindall made the comment that, uh, his officers didn't, didn't detect any alcoholic smells, any, anything from the, from the woman. Here's a, a letter of, uh, counseling on Kimber- Kimberly Aguirre, less than a month after my wreck, where she conducted a traffic stop on a subject who was listed as a habitual traffic offender, driving while license suspended. During the stop, she became aware, through the driver's own admission, that his license was suspended. Officer Aguirre failed to take appropriate action upon a commission of a crime, and allowed the crime to continue by allowing the subject to continue driving. Am I gonna put my faith in that she knew that that woman wasn't drinking? I think that woman could've been sitting on the curb drinking a beer, and Aguirre wouldn't have known it. But, like I said, Chief Tindall sidestepped Dalen Wilson, he can't sidestep Kimberly Aguirre, that's, that's on him.
Mr. Jones, I, I followed up with my city manager on this issue, uh, you laid us up to date, and I, and of course, Chief Tindall can respond in a moment if, if he feels necessary to anything you've said tonight. Um, there has been a letter that has been mailed to your house, um, to your address, as I understand, the red, the letter reads as follows, "Dear Mr. Jones," the author's, of course, Brian Watkins, the city manager, "Dear Mr. Jones, I am following up with you in response to your concerns, please be, please be advised that they have been thoroughly reviewed with the, with the Chief Tindall and the city attorney. The city has acted in accordance with applicable law and procedure in response to your concerns. Additionally, the city has asked FDLE if it would review the investigation, as well after hearing your concerns. The FDLE declined to agree to the city's request. At this time, there is, there is no further action to be taken by the city after a thorough consideration of your concerns. Sincerely, Brian Watkins, City Manager."
I, honestly, Mayor, I expected no less. Uh, I honestly didn't. There, and it's like I told, I think, Council, Council Lady Holly, there's only one reason I'm here. I know that camera's behind me, and if it takes me riding up and down the city streets of Milton every day with a billboard sign on my truck, that's where I'll be. Uh, you're right, I did, I talked to, uh, FDLE, and, and I'm not ashamed to give names. I talked to an Eric Daniels, Agent Eric Daniels, number two in charge of Pensacola. Eric Daniels said Chief Tindall knew in the beginning that they wasn't coming, he was just blowing smoke. So...
Chief Tindall, do you have anything you want to say to this, or any comment?
Okay, um, counsel, at first, I did contact FDLE, I didn't speak with Eric Daniels. Honestly, I don't believe Eric Daniels would say that, but, uh, I did speak with the special agent in charge, Jack Massey. Uh, Jack had informed me that, uh, that no, they would decline to look into this investigation. Couple hours later, he called me back, and he informed me Mr. Jones had called once in July and twice in October. They told Mr. Jones the same thing they told me. So, as far as, you know, any, anything, you know, getting swept under rug or anything like that, it is, it's not true. So, um... The other part, the verbal counseling, or, I'm sorry, the letter of counseling for Kimberly, whenever she did not arrest that habitual traffic offender, well, we addressed that during our disciplinary actions. She got a letter of counseling, that's, you know, basically the same thing as a letter of reprimand. We have phases in our counseling, so, you know, you just can't go and, you know, fire them unless it's just something egregious. Was that an error on her part? Certainly. Uh, do all my officers make the right call every time? No, they don't. And I'll do my best to address each and every situation as it arises. But I do have good officers, and we do have a good police force. Um, Dalen Wilson, Mr. Jones, correct, that is his testimony. Dalen was the backup officer down there at the crash. Dalen spoke with the driver who was at fault, uh, albeit she was still trapped in her vehicle, but, you know, he didn't notice any signs of impairment. Kimberly, Patrolman Aguilar spoke with the at-fault driver, she didn't see any signs. Um, Dalen's testimony is that, you know, he didn't know she didn't have all the needed information until he got at the hospital. Well, I believe that. I mean, backup officers usually don't collect the information. You know, they're doing traffic, this one had dogs that need to be gathered, you know, he, he was helping in stuff like that. Um, the information that has held true without this investigation was they did not have the at-fault driver's insurance information. Uh, Patrolman Aguilar does not remember how she got the lady's driver's license and, uh, registration, she doesn't remember if she ran a tag, or if she got it from hers, so, you know, with that, I, I can't, I can't prove it. Now, what I stated the other night about the verbal counseling, I just took Mr. Jones at his word, uh, regardless of, you know, it's very difficult for me to prove whether this was said or that was said. I know a lot of times, somewhere in between the middle of the conversation lies the truth. So, I basically tried to believe Mr. Jones, and err on the side of counsel, or caution, and counsel my officers, and that's what I did. Um, he brought up the issue with the affidavit of separation. Yes, Kimberly's affidavit of separation was completed prior to the investigation being completed. Um, she left for reasons other than the investigation. I'd stated that I, you know, had an idea that we knew that she was gonna leave prior to this investigation beginning. So, you know, at that time, I directed that box to be checked the way that I felt it should be checked, and it was with no misconduct. And it's like I stated the last time, is that I verified it with FDLE, um, that form, the way it's completed is up to the administrator's prerogative. And I also discussed that if the investigation would've shown that she committed misconduct, then I could simply just go back and change it. So, you know, I, I mean, there was no trying to cover up, no, you know, uh, trying to, you know, pull anything over. I mean, if the investigation would've showed misconduct, then I'd went back and changed it, and, uh, FDLE would've been perfectly fine with it. And that's according to our local field representative. Other than that, me putting Dalen off, well, I explained it last time. Um, you know, the former chief hired him, I inherited him. If the state attorney's office continues to want to use his testimony in court, then I'll abide by that. Now, if he commits some kind of, you know, misconduct or misbehavior, or something where I have to take disciplinary action, then I'll do that also. Um, other than that, that's, uh, you know, that's pretty much it, unless if y'all have any questions, I mean.
I, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've been going through this for probably two, two hours or better, a couple meetings, I have yet, maybe it's just me, to understand what Mr. Jones is actually looking for. Do you know, as the police chief, what he's looking for?
No, sir, I have no idea. Um, the, um, you know, the complaint whenever he met with me was wanting officers disciplined, and wanting the at-fault driver charged for leaving the scene of an accident. And like I said, I read the statute the last time, uh, um, as best I can tell from Officer Aguirre, the only information that was lacking was the insurance information, in which that was gained later that night. Um, you know, according to statute, that's not something that, a piece of information you can charge somebody for leaving the scene with. Uh, she didn't leave to avoid detection, or, um, you know, anything. I mean, they gathered up the dogs, they left, took them to the kennels, and her friends took her to the hospital, and she was, you know, salt medical attention at the hospital. And other than that, I mean, it's, any crash, you know, we work, we try and determine the at-fault driver, uh, we show the at-fault driver at fault on the crash report, and for some of them, like this one here, we do write them a uniform traffic citation. And she got written a citation, and was shown at fault, and other than that, I mean, that's, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, any councilmen, something else to say? All right, one thing.
Looking up.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Lowry just asked a question, and if Mr. Jones could just briefly state what it is that he is...
That's fine, ma'am. Uh, originally, I didn't expect nothing more than the wrong to be righted, okay? If you all listened, Dalen Wilson said not once, not twice, but seven times on that recording, he, they did not know who that woman was. For that man to stand up here and say the only thing they were missing was her insurance is not true. Do you think for a minute that I'm making this up, that I had nothing better to do that night? If she had her information, why wasn't I given the information?
Have you been given the information?
It took a week and a half for me to get, for my attorney to get the police report. I, I didn't even know who the woman was for a week and a half.
But the insurance has been resolved, was your vehicle and all that?
My vehicle has been resolved, our injuries are not. Okay? Right now, and, and another thing that I'm up here, and, and I know the city attorney is here tonight, I have requested a piece of information that I've been denied. They used some information in the, in Internal Affairs Investigation, stating the time and the location the woman went to the hospital. I'm being denied based on HIPAA laws, okay? I don't care if the woman had a bloody nose. Alls I wanna know is where and when, and the name, because I, I doubt that too.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand what you're asking of...
I'm requesting the document that they cited in the Internal Affairs Investigation, where and when she went to the hospital that night. Uh, they're, they've, here's my, here's my thing.
Are you questioning that the HIPAA doesn't apply?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. What I'm questioning is, if HIPAA applies, didn't they break HIPAA by putting it in a report?
Well, no, sir, uh, I don't think they did, but I, I just, I guess my, my confusion is, what will that accomplish to receive that document?
Because I've got pretty good evidence that they were at Milton Hospital that night.
Does it matter which hospital she went to?
It could make a difference when they left in a hurry that night from Milton, if, if they were gonna do blood at Milton.
Are you suing her?
Uh, I, at this point in time, I'd rather not comment on it.
Well, I assume if your lawyer chooses to sue her, that he will proceed to obtain any document relevant to any action y'all may pursue against her, but we've already produced what's appropriate under public records, and if HIPAA prevents us from, from producing something to you, then we cannot do it.
The, the time and the date is, is HIPAA? Uh, that's, that's my question, I, I don't want a medical diagnosis.
I'll look at it again if you'd like, then.
I would appreciate that, ma'am. No, mama, no.
Is that something your insurance company could, like, your car insurance company could get from her insurance company?
Her insurance company has nothing to do with it. All right, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna, you guys need to take this outside. All right, uh, maybe Heather, if we can follow up with that question? Just take a moment and... Heather? Oh, you're having a meeting, sorry. Uh, what, uh, what is your advice to council right now?
What Chief and I were just discussing is we'll review what we can provide in response to his request. This is not something that had been made known to me before just now, that he was interested in this, so we'll, we'll talk, and we'll get it, we'll get it handled, counsel.
I mean, we will review the request, and if there's things that we can provide, and that haven't been provided, we'll do it.
And I asked them to leave, as emotions were getting the better of them, and I think it was time for them to go, based on that. But they, I didn't kick them out, they can, you know.
Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, Police Chief Tindall, uh, I'm just looking at avenues, of course, he's not happy with what the city's done, your report, uh, the FDLE, the local FDLE offices, is there a, where he can go to the state FDLE in pursuit? I mean, because there's not a whole lot that I see that we can, that we can do any further.
No, I mean, you know, the local is the state office for us, but, I mean, you know, everybody has a ball, so if he wants to go to Tallahassee, I'm sure he can contact them.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, and, just to clarify, the document he requested was a, the medical form that we got from the hospital.
Right.
Uh, and it's, my understanding is that HIPAA prevents you from releasing any medical form, and Ms. Smith may be able to clarify that, but, uh...
I, I did speak with Mr. Jones about that also, I, I also tried to get them to calm down, that truly, I believe that we were not trying to wrong them in any way, and that, I agreed with Ms. Lindsay that his best course was to, was to seek legal representation, that if he, if that is the only, the only thing he really wants is an apology, which it becomes apparent that the city does not feel that they made a mistake, and therefore they don't owe him one, and he feels like he was lied to or wronged, then that's what seeking legal help is for. And he won't get her medical record, because that's, that's a big deal now, a really big deal, and, and I'm sure Ms. Lindsay can tell you how many different forms have to be written, and it's tough to get them anymore.
Exactly, and we, uh, and we didn't have to subpoena them, the at-fault driver actually supplied them to us, but just because she supplied them to us, doesn't mean that I can just release a medical form.
You don't have an oblig-, well, you won't have an obligation until you're forced to.
Exactly, and, uh, and the only other thing is, is that, um, you know, he's complaining about the information the night of the crash. Um, normally, all we give him is a business card with a crash number on it. The crash reports aren't done, uh, usually within seventy-two hours, just whenever we complete one, but that's all the officers went up there was to do, was to assure him that we knew who the lady was, uh, they gave him a card with the number on it, and to check on, see, see how he was doing, and their conversation just went south from there. Uh, that's one reason I verbal counseled him. The, um, but, you know, we're gonna continue to go by the hospital and check on drivers whenever they're involved in crash, that's a courtesy that we provide. Um, a lot of agencies don't even do that, they'll give you the card at the scene, don't go by and check on your anything, but, uh, but we're gonna continue to do it. but we're going to continue to do it. Uh, sometimes it may bite us, uh, um, you know, but I, I think that we do more good than bad whenever we do something like that. So, uh, but is there anything else I can do for y'all?
Any questions for the chief?
No, I was just asking him about the, um, not you, but the gentleman, um, about the car insurance, because if, like, you're involved in a wreck, then you go to the hospital, doesn't your car insurance, like the, um, personal injury kind of pay for that? So I think maybe if he did seek legal help, then maybe they could provide him what information he needs to get what he needs to get done.
Certainly, certainly.
That's why I asked him that.
I did too, and I, and I gave him the number of, uh, you know, I work for Legal Aid in Pensacola, and they have an office in Crestview. I mean, they have many, many offices in, in Florida, so, um, they're just, they're just really upset. They're, they're, like he said, and the wife who is getting very emotional, she just really wants an apology. They truly believe they were wronged, and that's the nugget that's eating at them.
Did they, did they tell you what specifically the city had done to wrong them?
They felt like letting her leave and, um, like she was given preferential treatment, I believe is, that, that, what, I think what he said is, they all knew her. And they let her go and take her dogs home. And they feel, the family, the Joneses, feel wronged. In their opinion, the other driver received preferential treatment. That's the nugget of what's going on here. And, and that's why the wife is very upset.
Thank you.
And, and like I say, she actually got a citation where, you know, a lot of drivers don't, so, uh, but...
How, how many cases did you have this year?
Uh, quite a few.
This is just one. His two shall pass.
But, you know, and that's why I counsel them. I, I want my officers to be able to talk to anyone during any situation and hopefully be able to help them and have a good outcome. Uh, we always don't get that right, but, uh, you know, we can strive to do better the next time. And, uh, so like I say, that's why I took his word for it. Uh, there was neither officer, you know, um, showed any signs of, of, um, you know, admittance to disrespect or anything. You heard Officer Daylon Wilson explain what he was trying to do when he made the comment about Chief Deputy Spencer. But, you know, it, it just turned out wrong. And, uh, so like I said, I did address that and, uh, and I'll continue to do so in the future if any of us get it wrong like that, so...
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will, uh, put the rest, put that to rest for now. Um, city attorney's report?
Nothing to report.
All right, city clerk? All right. Okay. All right, moving on to page two, we have the agenda items. Uh, we'll start off with the administrative, uh, committee, that's, uh, Ms. Hathaway. All right, what you'll, what you'll do is you'll, uh...
Sorry, this is my first time.
All right, so since you are the, uh, the admin, um, uh, chairman, uh, chairwoman, uh, what I would say, what you do is you just read off the information on, under your, uh, committee, and then of course, uh, there's a vote required, and, and what will happen is someone will make a motion, then I'll take over.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, committee recommends pursuing establishment of a new citywide organization that meets certification requirements of national and state Main Street program.
No move?
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Smith, second councilwoman, councilwoman, was it Powell?
Johnson.
No, okay.
Several.
No? Johnson, oh, it was Johnson. She heard my voice, but it was, she was there before me. All right, uh, and the cost is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, discussion.
Yes. What do you mean by new citywide organization?
Well, I, I believe what the committee, the whole, the motion was to start from scratch and create a new organization, uh, that meets the state and local Main Street, or the, you know, the state and national Main Street guideline.
Okay, I, I talked to Ms. Wood this morning, quite a while. And, um, when I had talked, earlier when I had talked to, um, their treasurer, I can't think of her name now.
Connie Clark.
Connie Clark. He had talked about doing away with the Main Street, turning in their information. If I had to come in and talk to you about that?
Yes, sir.
According to Ms. Wood, she is, you can't do that, that, that organization is there.
I, 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 I agree, and I don't think there's any doubt of that. But I think part of the discussion was that, uh, current Main Street Milton and their 501(c)(3) designation is theirs, and as long as they're paying their, you know, their fee to the state, you know, they will be a, an organization. Yes, sir?
My question is, I think that it were, if we can work with the bylaws, or the original organization, we've already got some of this from a packet that I had received earlier, it's already underway. So it's not like starting over from scratch, but...
No, it's more like reorganization.
Well, like I said, right.
Right, it's, it's not, I mean, you can mince words, we can break out the the sasara and, you know, figure out what's the best word to use, but the organization exists. We as a board do not have the right to take it away or, I mean, they are registered 501(c)(3) and they have been for, I don't know, twelve, twenty years, long time. And, um, there's no point in reinventing the wheel. What it needs is a shot in the arm, some steady funding, um, much like a lot of organizations. I mean, you, you start out well and you have a big pot of money and you get a grant, and then it gets harder and harder to keep funding bigger programs. I mean, that's just kind of how it is.
What is the, what is the current health of this organization? What, what's their, what's their board look like there? Are they down to one or two members, or what's?
Um, there's a lot of members, there's a lot of life members, um, around. Um, the board has not met, that I know of, since Sammy died. Um, you know, Connie, without seeking counsel from anybody, decided to go and close the account. Um, she felt like, as the treasurer, that was, you know, her purview, and a lot of people got upset about that, and so, um, you back up and punt. And that's why Ms. Sharp is here to tell you that they've been working very hard. Um, I was a charter board member, along with Jennifer Byram and, uh, Sammy and Abby Vernon. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's been existence for a very long time. I mean, we, I wrote three cookbooks with Farmer's Market. I mean, we're, the pots that are downtown, I mean, it didn't go away. We just got old and didn't raise as much money.
All right, so Ms. Sharp?
Cassandra Sharp, thirty-one oh nine Waterview Drive. Um, first of all, Councilwoman Smith, I hope that you realize that the motion that you just made is to bypass the current Main Street Milton program. And by the way that this is written, it's to create a new citywide organization.
Yeah, that's kind of, I, I had an issue with the word new.
So, so two things. Um, one, the Florida Main Street program, as well as the National Main Street program, is not about a citywide effort. It is about the revitalization of downtowns. So it would not be appropriate for this to be a citywide, um, effort. Uh, the city council, of course, could model after this, which I think is what Brian really in, intended, but that would be a different effort. So when it comes to a Main Street program, it is, um, its purpose is for downtown revitalization. And you have in your packet the, uh, program area, which is quite a large area, and Randy Jorgensen had spoken about it being inclusive of some Stewart Street areas. It is, it's African-American community, it's almost, you know, to Baghdad, it's all the way up to practically, you know, Munson Highway. It's probably the most inclusive that you should ever try and make your Main Street program.
Because it's really geographically big.
Absolutely, and it encompasses all, you know, of what would be considered your downtown. So any other effort should really be separate. But I just want to make sure, because you made your motion, um, that you, I'm asking you to amend your motion for, uh, the city to work with the current local nonprofit organization, Main Street Milton, Inc., and to fund that program and to possibly, you know, as a directive, uh, direct city staff and city manager to work in a positive fashion with that organization. And let's, uh, learn to work together and move this program and move the city forward.
I'll, I'll put that in form of a motion.
But we already have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, sorry.
So what you have to do is you, you have to amend the motion.
I will, I'm, I'm on the mic, not that I need it, but you can hear me. Um, so I would like to change my motion that a joint city and Main Street Board organize that they will meet the certification requirements of the national and state Main Street program, which is what both, both the city wants and the organization has always tried to pursue. And of course, I'm thrilled to death with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, is that suffice in wording?
Well...
Madam Clerk, she's, she's furiously writing, she's writing.
Who made this, who made the second originally? Do you, do you, do you amend your second too?
If I can just get a little bit more justification, talking about working together, not as...
Yes, but, but having to reinvent the wheel means all new bylaws, all new charters, starting all over, training all the officers, getting a new 501(c)(3). I mean, it's a lot more time and a lot more money to have to do it that way.
So therefore, I will, uh...
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, discussion.
Why is this going to work any better than it has in the past?
It worked wonderfully in the past till we all got old and we lost a lot of board members. So, one of the things about that, so did the garden club, so did, so did a lot of organizations. I mean, all of us who worked hard got old. And, you know, other people didn't step up. We've got some fine folks who stepped up now, but it's not enough of them. And that's what we need to go out and recruit.
I think it'll work, I mean, it'll work better, because it's, it's more grant money, it's, it's more, I mean, you have more to play with as far as getting everybody to work together and get along, and, I mean, I don't see why it wouldn't work better.
No, and the, the four-point approach hasn't changed. I mean, it worked, we pursued it, we, I remember. How it was.
Well, right, well, I mean, I'm not saying this organization's had some, or, like, you know, it, I think it needs a shot in the arm, because right here, I'm just reading a old thing that the city of Milton proudly supports, Main Street Milton. You have meant so much to our community. Well, I think, uh, you know, I think we've got new people in this community that are willing to step up and make this happen, so I'd fully support this.
I would, um, I'm sorry, Cassandra, would you not go ahead and speak first?
Go ahead.
Okay. The Main Street program, state of Florida, I mean, when it started, it was a great program. And, and the city, um, joined Main Street Milton to, to help them to progress. We gave them, I think it was in two thousand and two, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-five thousand dollars a year for three years to pay for an executive director, and y'all all know that. But now when we're talking about not reinventing the will, I would like for this council to be provided a copy of the bylaws. I mean, you say, don't reinvent the bylaws. Well, give us a copy of your current bylaws, um, a copy of your membership list, a copy of the last three years' tax returns that was filed, and a copy of your articles of incorporation. Let the city and Main Street Milton sit down and review these bylaws to see how they read, um, to see if that's going to be a good fit out with the city. Um, I, I don't know what they read.
I, I believe that's what the city manager has done.
No, it's not been done yet, has it?
I'm sorry.
Have you read the bylaws and through that?
Uh, for the current Main Street Milton program, no, ma'am, I have not.
Okay.
If I may, Cassandra Sharp, thirty-one oh nine Waterview Drive. Um, articles of incorporation are available online and through SunBiz, and, and those can be provided.
Yes.
This is not about the city of Milton trying to control a local nonprofit. This is about a partnership between a local nonprofit that has been in existence for many years. And, uh, you have examples of two written agreements in your packet that, um, that I think is the main difference here. We are talking about, uh, Main Street Milton is in its composition now, it's in a rebuilding phase, so we are talking about, um, different people being involved. This is a different city council as well. So I think the city council as a whole is in a perfect opportunity to work with helping to rebuild the local Main Street Milton, uh, program. It's not about how that organization's bylaws read or any of that, it's about moving together in a positive fashion. And when you enter into that written agreement, it's basically stating what Main Street Milton will provide to the city of Milton and the, uh, community, and what the city of Milton will provide to that local nonprofit. There are, um, exit, um, agreements in place so that it can be canceled. So basically, this either works or it doesn't. But this is a very important program, it's a very successful program, and I think it's very important, uh, for our community. And for the most part, anything in the past which is really fairly recent, as far as, um, issues between some people with the city of Milton and, uh, Main Street Milton, it, it was centered around, you know, politics. And it's time to get the politics out of it and move this community forward. And I think you have the ability to do that, and I think Main Street Milton has the ability to do it. So, let's do it, and if it doesn't work, but we need everyone moving together in a positive fashion and not trying to continue the negativity and to work against it. This really is about revitalization of our downtown and learning to work with each other.
This really is about crossing every t and dot and every i, when you're spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money.
It's also about understanding how it works.
Yes, ma'am, and if I could finish. It, it's our responsibility as caretakers, as you know, of the taxpayers' money. And as I said a while ago, I'm not against Main Street Milton, I'm just not really sure about you saying not reinvent the will. Maybe that will needs a little critiquing.
Means don't start from scratch and, and circumvent the local organization. And historically, you have been very against the Main Street Milton, uh, program.
And Ms. Sharp, we do not need that, okay? I'm trying to work with you.
I'm just, I'm just, I agree.
And if you have negative comments towards me, you're, you're more than welcome to sit down, okay? I'm just telling you. But for us to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, you can bet every t is going to be crossed and every i is dotted, you're just not going to get a check written for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's not happening.
You don't write a check to the city, uh, excuse me, you don't write a check to Main Street Milton. You're providing a city staff person as a program manager. So that's why I said it's important that you understand how the program actually works. You are not writing a check for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Main Street Milton.
Okay, well then how, where's the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars going?
It's support, and that, that budget is...
If, if, if I might, just for the reason for the whole hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, was in our discussion with Ms. Wood, the director of the state office, when they provided us with a draft budget for what it would cost, what they recommend to be properly staffed and funded, from the total cost, annual cost of a program was between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, uh, if, in this case, if only if we were paying, or we'd be looking to pay all of the funding for that. Now, I, I don't know whether they have membership dues, they have some contribution to it or not, I, you know, I don't know. That's where the hundred and twenty-five thousand comes from. So just understand, that's from, Ms. Wood sent us a proposed budget for a, um, a, what they proposed as the budget for a Main Street program to be fully funded through a year, and it was a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five.
In a city of our size.
Right.
And talking to her today, she said that it's typically like a third, a third, and a third, where it's third to city, a third from membership dues, and a third from fundraising.
That, that, like I say, I, like I say, there's probably other avenues, so whether the number ends up being a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's probably dependent on which direction you're going.
Well, what counsel, that's what we have to look at in front of us. So I'm just saying, to ask for a simple, uh, copy of what every organization should have on file... file should not be such a big issue.
All right. Casey?
It's definitely not a big issue, but the reason we came up with the big number is like Brian said, that's a total. That's not counting for fundraising, it's not counting for community support. It's just saying, this is the total operating budget for a program like that. And I agree, you know, obviously, we do need to see information, but I think that's what this is about. This is about, do we want to go and get that information? Because staff's not going to go get that information without us giving direction, or do we not? I think that's where we're kind of at now, so let's not get bogged down on specifics because this is about, do we want to proceed? Do we want to find out the information and try to work, or do we not?
Well, I just don't want the council to say yes, and then somebody expects a check next week.
No, absolutely not.
That's not how it works anyway.
We're all about accountability, Sharon.
It's kind of like, what do we spend on the movies? I mean, if you look at what we spend, you know, for the summer movies and the Christmas movies and the fall movies, I was like, whoa, okay. And, you know, I'd like a little ticker so I knew how many of them were citizens and how many came from Baghdad and Pensacola and everything else, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I joke, people, I don't go down to the concerts because I can hear them from my back deck.
Yeah.
You know, I don't have to go, I can hear it across the water. But I used to. Now I'm old and I don't want to schlep my chair.
Yes, sir.
Ricky Downs, 5205 Hawksnest Drive. The Main Street Milton program has always been thought of as being a good program for the community. The issues weren't necessarily the program itself, and it was always kind of execution. And that's one of the things, if the city's putting any skin in the game whatsoever, whether it be personnel, money, time, whatever, I think that going back and rewriting the bylaws to make sure it is a program that the city can stand with or have on its own is worth it. So I mean, we definitely need to do our due diligence. And if going back and scrapping and redoing bylaws and reinventing the wheel to have a better wheel that actually rolls, it makes sense.
Thank you, Ricky.
Are you aware of the bylaws?
I'm not.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying is...
That's what we're trying to find out. So we're trying to get that information now.
And I understand that, but you know, it's still...
I'm not trying, I'm just trying to say, let's not make assumptions that everything's bad.
No, and I don't believe it is.
Until we can get some information.
Now, another thing that I did like whenever this was brought up and talked about in the committee of the whole, that I would like in the new program is that it does say citywide. I think that the entire community of Milton needs some sort of rehabilitation help throughout of Milton. It's not just downtown. And I feel that we put way too many of our eggs in that downtown basket that just really haven't, you know, helped us as much as I think in other parts of the community. If you look, you know, go down Stewart Street, all the way up Stewart Street in the city, the nicest building down there is probably Cooper Plumbing, who doesn't really have to look nice, it's a plumbing place. You know, he'd just have racks in the back with the ugly building in the front, and that'd be fine. And you look at all the buildings that are just destitute.
This covers that.
That entire corridor or just that?
Yeah, it does. It covers...
It only goes to Oliver Street.
Can I speak to that too? We used to have really nice trees all the way down Stewart Street, all the way down to King Middle School. And they dug them all up and filled in solid concrete sidewalks all the way down because it was easier. Now, that wasn't helpful, in my opinion. I thought it was hideous. I mean, were the trees really hurting your view? You know, lots of cities spend lots and lots of money. I don't even want to know what the taxpayers as a whole spent tearing up 90 and redoing it for the third time now. But that's progress because I do like to drive. I don't want to ride my bike up and down because I'll run over.
And guess what, you know, if the geographic footprint of the City of Milton, it isn't really that big.
No.
It's pretty small. So that's what it says, is citywide, I mean, we're not...
Well, just because we're implementing this plan doesn't mean we're going to forget about the rest of town.
Well, that's fine, and that's another, they could be two separate issues. Like Cassandra said, I agree with that, and I don't have a problem with the joint issue. I'm just saying that if the city's putting skin in the game, we need to make sure we do our due diligence in that it is...
And one of the confusion with the wording was when we talked about this, me and Brian, we were talking about, you know, we, yes, we want the Main Street Milton to be successful, we want to, we got to do a certain, there's a certain parameter to that, to be part of the Main Street organization. But what we talked about is we can utilize those approaches elsewhere in the city.
Right.
Just not in the parameter of this program. But we talked about taking the lessons from that and being able to use it in the, like you said, the Stewart corridor. We actually talked specifically.
And you're talking about, you know, a broken wheel. Looking back at some of the accomplishments, it will seem to be working pretty well back then, so I think we need to get back to that and even better.
And periods of time it did, and there were periods of time it didn't.
Just like, there'll be wording in there that we can get out of it if things aren't being run the way we need to, and they should be. Everybody should be held accountable on it. Thanks.
And that's what we're doing here.
Well, and if the person is joint, city employee, they'll, you know, they'll be accountable by the city manager instantly.
Yes, sir.
Vernon Compton, 5149 Santa Rosa Street. Some really good points tonight about the program, and I like the positive nature of everybody wanting to work together to find a way to make this work out. Because Main Streets have been proven all over the country, United States, all over Florida, to really change communities. Downtowns that were pretty dead or 100% filled with businesses, there are examples of those. So, but it takes the community working together. What I wanted to say about the startup of Main Street Milton, that was one of the periods of time that it really did work together very well with the city. The city manager attended the Main Street Milton's on a regular basis, so when our bylaws were created and our Articles of Incorporation, we had a lot of involvement from the City of Milton. When we hired our first executive director, Donna and the city were very, very involved in that process. So it really was a partnership. And like others have pointed out, that was a particular strength at that time. And I think that's what you're hearing is, that's what we'd like to get back again today. And there are some other folks that served on the board and served very well. Councilwoman Lumsford was on the board for a while, Councilwoman Jones, Clayton White's wife...
Gail Timms was on it?
Right, Gail Timms, Clayton White's wife. Betty was on the board and was very involved in the downtown planner project. So we had a lot of involvement from the City of Milton, and I think that's what you're hearing tonight. We want to see that happen again, that this is a partnership. It's not an organization by itself. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Question. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Serene Kike, I'm 7419 Judge McColl Drive, and I'm here tonight to speak as the past Program Director of Main Street Milton. I do believe in Main Streets, I truly do. But I hope that you're very careful in deciding what you're doing tonight. And I hope that some changes will be made from when I was Program Director. I did see some failures take place, and I did see successes take place. I saw both. I say, I think I see ways that if you want to pursue this, you do need to make some big changes. One of the big changes you need to make is make sure the director does not work for the Board of Directors for Main Street Milton. That director should be working for the city. You can actually go on with this approach, the four-point approach, even without a Main Street, to be honest with you, without spending $125,000. The Board of Directors is the ones that's going to possibly hold you back from progress. I don't want to be the negative person here, but I do want you to consider, you're going to have another body of people to listen to and to answer to and to have to accommodate with, get along with, and partner with. And that sometimes can hold back progress. I have believed in Milton, I put my soul in Milton, and I have stepped out of Milton. I have only fear to protect it tonight. Please, consider this move carefully when you make it. $125,000 is a lot of money. Before I believed in this program, I would have to see what the goals were to put this type of money into a program. I'd have to have these goals set with some deadlines. I'd have to hear from you guys, what were the successes that make you believe in this program again? I would like to see you visit other programs that are working well, like Ocean Springs, Mississippi, where yes, it does take community engagement, where all entities work together. Your historical, your arts, your garden centers, your public servants, they all need to work together. That's true, and we don't need negativity. You are absolutely right about that. It needs a change of players. It can work, but you're going to need to change your players. I'm here tonight as a past Program Director. If any of you have any questions, I put myself out there tonight for that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That we noted. Yes, ma'am.
Cassandra Sharp, 3109 Waterview Drive. Just to bring that all the way back, again, it's an understanding of how the program works. And the best part is, yes, we are talking about all of the organizations hopefully working together, including Santa Rosa Arts and Culture Foundation. Because we all used to work together, Santa Rosa Historical Society, Main Street Milton, Santa Rosa Arts and Culture Foundation. In fact, two of those organizations were founded for the community by the same original, you know, members with some common goals. Just so that you do have an understanding, again, there's written agreements in place in your packet, you have examples of work plans. Those work plans move forward with both the city and the Main Street Milton program. So, yes, the way that the program is designed, it is a city employee. They do answer to the Main Street Milton program, but they're also working in conjunction with the City of Milton, hopefully with the CRA. So you should have your Historic Preservation Board, your Downtown Board, and your CRA, you know, all working together. So one of the first steps, of course, would be the funding, and then to start advertising for that Program Director, which falls under the city manager. It's a city staff position, so he handles all of that like normal hiring. And then that Program Manager, together with the city and Main Street Milton, would develop that work plan. That's where you together decide what your projects are, how you prioritize them, and how you move forward. So everything is open, it is in agreements, and basically, you do have new players because you're new, and so is Main Street Milton. And this is about moving forward.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second on the floor.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Repeat the motion, Councilwoman Smith?
The committee recommends a... Scratch it off. Pursue...
Yes, I believe it was basically, the motion was for the city to work with the current Main Street program within their framework in order to establish processes in which to reinvigorate that program.
Right, to meet the certification requirements of the National and Main Street program. One of those is that there has to be a paid director, which is why we're seeking the money. They have to have a designated location, also money, and they also have to have support, which is computers, telephone, and that kind of stuff. It's not like anybody is getting a check for $125,000. I think even the most highest-paid director for a Main Street program in a big city is way less than that.
Okay, so you stayed the motion.
Yes, so...
Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So this is just, this motion is just to, what we all discussed, come back together?
I would think so. Obviously, I think it would be, what I would think my guidance from this motion would be, would be to go meet with the current Main Street organization, determine what their goals and guidelines are, look at what would needed to be done in order to have them meet those certification requirements that they have, and then basically come back to you and say, "This is what we need, we can do this, we can do that, this is going to cost that, this is going to cost this, so-and-so works for them, so-and-so works for me," you know, that sort of thing.
So right now, it's just trying to work together.
Yep.
That's it.
Yes, I mean, I...
Forget the money, forget the money.
That's what I was going to say. I could strike the money and just make the motion that the city, in partnership with the Main Street Milton program, provide for a director, location, and support at something under that number, okay?
Okay, well, that's a little different.
The state has a requirement that they have, I know it's vague.
Yeah.
So I can ask for it, but I hope we don't spend anywhere near that.
Okay.
All right.
At that point, I would just, I realize that a director, a location, and support is part of the program, but guess what I'm looking for is to make sure, what I understood for the motion was to work with the current Main Street program to figure out how it would work, and it would probably include those three things, but there's also a lot of other stuff that would go with it. Now, obviously, you got to have those three things, they're part of the structure to make it work.
And then definitely would come back to the council.
And anytime, we would have to come back, because up to this point, you have not authorized any, the spending of any money. So at that point, we would have to come back for the authorization.
Okay, that's good. I can deal with that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Teresa Messick, 6830 Pine Street. I also was a member of Main Street Milton for many years and was their treasurer and left in 2010. Back in 2003, the city did give Main Street Milton and tried to partner with them $150 a month, which was $1,800 a year. And one of the reasons they gave that to them was because they said they had rent and the whole nine yards. And then 2004, they asked for more money, and actually, Mayor Thompson put in there for $10,000 to be donated to Main Street Milton. Over these years of 2005, 2006, and 2005, they were budgeted $2,500. And in May of 2010, the money was asked to be stopped because they were turning in rent receipts that they weren't actually being charged. And one of the properties was Gail Timms on Margaret Street, and that they were told that they were having rent and they were not be charged for this. So the city took the money away. They were also getting money from the county. I don't know why the county took the money. But Main Street is a good program, and in the past, it has worked. But it needs new people, and if the city is going to do this, they need to look in other cities. And Jeff, I spoke with you about the one in Georgia, which is Maritown, and they use the downtown redevelopment, and they have someone who actually works for the city. They are a city employee. We do not need to work with the current board. They have other issues with other people in the city. In the past, we got memberships, $25 a year, and that's how we got some of our money, grant money, and then we got money from the city. So if you're going to do this, and it is taxpayers' money, that you're spending some of this with grant money, raising money, membership, and everything, it needs to have a clean slate and start over. Now, you've got many people speaking here. I was a board member, you got Serene, was a director, and we're asking you to please do your homework. Don't just take, but someone says, "Jeff, you call to the cities." Casey, I know you're very smart, Sharon, and so on and so on. Get the way these are working in other cities. Serene gave the example in the City of Florida, tried State of Georgia and other cities. Don't be quick to make a decision based on emotions here, okay? These are all facts from 2003 to 2010. It's in the city records, you can pull it yourself. Thank you.
And just so you know, I have looked up several different cities and the organizations and how they do it, and I think that's what we're trying to work towards here.
All right, just stay positive, that's what we got to do. Everybody get along. All right, any other discussion? Can you raise your hand, please, vote? And the motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you for that report, Ms. Conroy.
Can we take five?
Thank you.
Say what?
Can we take five?
Five minutes, then we'll be right back. That's four minutes and 49 seconds. Four minutes and 48 seconds. Four minutes and forty-eight seconds.
Very pretty job.
Thank you.
Have you?
About done. About done.
Oh, no.
Got in a fever.
Got in a fever.
He's been sick pretty much.
Did he touch those?
Yeah. I don't know.
'Cause I know he picks them up, put them down?
I don't know. Think so, I don't know who put them out.
I don't think I should.
There's a mask, bad. Well, if I market feels a bit strong, we may unit. Well, that's... Got to, you have a star. Otherwise, you're in the same place. They say it. At the corner, according to the motion, I didn't think we approved the funding.
Your eyes. Like, you can touch it and rub your eyes, that's completely...
All right, ladies and gentlemen, back to live action. According to my watch, I have seven oh six P.M.
Mr. Mayor.
No more breaks.
Huh, nope. Well, depends how long we go. We get to nine, I'll take another. I'd like to get a clarification and revisit our last, on the Main Street program.
Sure.
Brian, did we approve funding up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand? And moving the program forward where you're going RFQ for that position?
No, sir, I don't think so. I think what the motion was, was to work with the current Main Street program to develop what would needed to be, need to be done through their, working with their program in order to get it back into certification.
That will take too long.
I think so, too. And I think the longer we sit here and not do this and just, I think we're gonna be missing out on possible grant money and things like that.
Well, I'd like to amend that motion, then.
Well, it's already been, it's already been...
Can I make a new motion?
You can make a new motion.
Okay, to move this, we're gonna, that the city works with the current Main Street program, we approve funding up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and move this program forward.
I second that.
Okay, motion from Councilwoman Snow, we have a second. And Councilwoman Hathaway, discussion.
Up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars by the city? We were talking about three-way split here, right?
Correct.
Now we're talking about...
No.
Your motion is to have the city give the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
It's based on the, on the split.
Right.
Let's make sure that's clear.
Okay.
That the city is not on the hook for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Jordan, that's cash and in-kind. Like, if the, if the Main Street manager has an office here, it has a value.
His motion did not define that. So now that we have defined it...
It's up to, so, right.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, they're not, they're not getting paid a hundred and twenty-five?
That's been clarified.
If they are, I'm signing up.
Councilwoman Snow, that's been clarified.
Clarified of that and move forward on RFQ for the position.
The only question I would have is, where's the hundred and twenty-five thousand gonna come?
It's not a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Or up to a hundred and twenty-five.
I don't have that one.
Like I said, I don't know what the value is of an office in this building that the taxpayers already pay for, but if he or she has an office here and other duties, then the city has a value of what that person is doing.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you about what to do. I'm just trying to figure out how to, you know, how much money we talking about? And it's not currently in our budget, so if we're talking about thirty or forty thousand or something like that, or twenty thousand or whatever it is, we still have to figure out where it's gonna come from.
Well, maybe the Main Street manager can be the other half of Parks and Rec's activities person. That's part of what they do.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have an open position over there.
We do, and if that's what, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for exactly, you know...
I mean, that's kind of a big part of what they do, is organize activities and fundraisers and community events, and so I think that's a good fit for that. And since she's trying to move away from us, we have to hire someone else anyway, so I think it's a good fit.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we're saying, take the Parks and Rec's...
Half FTE.
The event coordinator at Parks and Rec's and apply that to the Main Street director position.
I think that would work.
We don't, she's in Maryland, isn't she?
Well, we don't have one now. We don't have one.
It's not her physical person to trade, it's just the FTE to trade.
Well, I mean, I understand, I understand what you're saying, the, you know, the time of, the time is of the essence and that thing, but I do know that that position required a lot of time, and so would, would, I mean, in a standard, you know, probably fifty hour a week, sixty hours she was working, would she be able to squeeze that in, or is that something that was realistic from that position?
Actually, there's no one, it's a vacant position now.
No, what I'm saying is, when she was doing the job, when she was doing the job, is it realistic a thing that she could do that job and the Main Street job?
Well, it would also, the question there would be, you know, what exactly are we doing? Like, if we're gonna say, we take all of the events we do downtown, bands on the Blackwater, movies on the Blackwater, all that kind of stuff, if all of that's gonna move to Main Street Milton and as part of their duties as the executive director is to do all that, then that portion is not Parks and Rec's anymore.
But as part of the partnership, I guess you would rely on the city to continue to set the stage up and break it down and do bad control.
That would be, that would be something that I think we would have to work out, is at that point, you know, normally we'd come back, if Main Street Milton is now making application to do bands on the Blackwater, you know, like everybody else, we charge them three hundred and fifty bucks a night for the stage. We have them make application, we do that. Are we, you know, is that part of our contribution? Do we not charge them to do that?
Do you do an intercompany transfer when Parks and Recreation uses the stage?
No, because Parks and Rec's is the City of Milton.
We can work out all that part.
Yeah, I'm just, like I say, it's, it's, I think it's a lot harder than just saying, "I'm gonna go hire a person and turn them loose." You know, there's a lot of the details that are gonna work in here.
The, I understanding of that from the very beginning was that Main Street would be who takes care of the, which, and I understand in the past, that's what they did. They started the bands on the Blackwater, I, I, that's what I was told.
Well, that's fun. Yeah, that's fine. I understand, I don't disagree with that model at all. It's gonna take a lot of, you know, discussion and studying it to get it where it's gonna function correctly. I don't think we can do it tonight, you know, I don't think it's gonna happen tonight.
But if we don't vote for funding, we won't have anything.
It's not telling them to go spend that right this second, but that's where we can look at starting to pay for that position.
I don't think, have they been accredited for the last two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Who? Who's been accredited?
They don't have a solicitor's license.
Who?
Just to make, make sure everybody's aware, they are still an accredited Main Street program. From what I know, the letter that I saw from Ms. Wood, was they gave them ninety days in order to meet all of the stated requirements, those ten things in the list there, nor do that, which included hiring a...
That's what's...
A district.
She told me that today.
You know, and I'm guessing they're probably thirty days into that, sixty days already, somewhere along there. I don't know exactly what the...
This is the first of February, and that's like March twenty-second, so I don't think that we have to make a decision tonight to force, I mean, pay up, to go up to whatever pay, which has not even been established. None of this stuff's been established, it's like, you're just shooting in the wind here.
I think we're just approving the money, though, and then we can work out all the bugs afterwards.
And when Brian comes back to us with, with that position, then we can look at the funding.
So why do we need to approve up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand? Not, he's got to come back with the information and the money amount.
Because if we don't approve it, then you can't, to me, you can't move forward and look into other, you know, the director, exactly.
We don't know where the money's coming from right now. You got until the end of March to do this. I mean, this first of February, I mean, they, they still have their accreditation.
Mayor, call the vote.
We have, we have, okay, we have a motion to call the vote. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second to call the vote, all right. Motion from Councilwoman Snow, second.
How about him speaking?
Well, we have...
Go into motion.
Well, according to Robert's rules of order, we had to call, we had to call...
We don't call by Robert.
Well, according to your rules, you can call the question, and it has to be done with a two-thirds vote in order to call.
Right, and so we have a motion, we have a second, please vote.
This is for...
If you vote yes, it's to go ahead and vote on the item, if you vote no, it's to continue discussion.
Don't you still have...
If you vote yes, that means that you wanna go ahead and move on to the vote, the original motion. If you vote no, that means that you wanna continue having discussion on the item. How'd it break the tie? Okay, and the motion passes, so now, please vote. Well, she's gotta clear her head first. All right, please vote on the, on the motion.
For the, for what?
For what, the motion that Jeff made, yes.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of money that...
Whatever he's, yes. His motion.
I hope a lot of taxpayers are...
All right, so we have, the motion passes with two nays, and so it is done. All right, Finance Committee, Councilman Powell had to leave unfortunately, so I will, I'll take over his duty as Finance for this time. We have the fire assessment for parcel thirty-four two N twenty-eight. Committee recommends spending the fire service assessment for this parcel until title and ownership issues can be worked out. And Brian, do you have anything to add to this, since we talked about this before?
I'm sorry, sir, looking at the bad debt write-off?
No, this is, this is the fire assessment.
Oh, the fire assessment, yes, sir, I can tell you that, ah, where am I? Yeah. The fire service assessment, yes, we have talked about this, we have looked up, we have attempted to try to find the property again, it really can't be found. We have gone back and worked with the property appraiser, from even plotting the best we can from the deed that we can find, it shows that the property is outside of the city where it would be located. Even when we talked to the property appraiser and said, "Hey, look, you've got this piece of property that nobody can find, coded as in the city, from what we can tell, it's outside the city, and you should get rid of that city code, and then we wouldn't have to worry about this." Well, they came back and told us, "Well, because we can't find it, we can't tell you that it's not in the city." And they also came back and said, "Yes, really what needs to happen here is there needs to be a good title search on this piece of property," so that they can figure out exactly where it is, what happened to it. I mean, some of the stuff I was following between the property appraiser and his staff showed that they think it might be another piece of property that is, they currently show being owned by one of the churches, you know, and things like that, so. That's really kind of where we are, and we are kind of bantering back and forth with the property appraiser to find this. So again, I think we should probably stand, this way we can at least, if the lady does own a piece of property and we do find it, want to make sure that there's not a tax lien against, because we don't know. And if we suspend this, then we'll be able to get rid of that, and we can go about the purpose of trying to find it.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a motion to go with the committee recommendation? We have a motion from Councilwoman Smith, second from Councilwoman Lowry, discussion. I think there is none, please vote. Jeff? And the motion passes unanimously. All right, item eight fourteen, we have the bad debt write-off for November, December two thousand seventeen. Committee recommends approval of the bad debt write-off for January and February two thousand eighteen in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Obey.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Holly, second from Councilwoman Smith, discussion. I think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to page three, we now have Growth, the Growth and Development Committee, and I believe that's chaired by Councilwoman Smith.
Possibly. The committee recommends approval of the conceptual plan for the traditional neighborhood development within the con... development within the confines of Milltown Village. Mr. Watkins, do we have some backup for that?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, the Milltown Village is the area basically between Berry Hill Street and Munson Highway, rails to rails, and the river. And that's the one where we briefly talked about the, some change in the roads, cul-de-sac and stuff, trying to work in to get higher density housing into the area. And that, you know, that's really what we were looking at there.
Okay, so it's the, the traditional neighborhood and Milltown Village all together as a conceptual plan?
That's, that was correct, right.
But you didn't bring me a map?
Let me see if I can.
Please.
That's the one you talked about, Peggy.
I know, I love it, but my neighbors were like, are you kidding me? I was, sorry, I thought it was swell. And, and I'll be dead before it's built anyway, so in the future.
You've been saying that quite a lot, Peggy.
Well, you know, do you look at, I'm sixty, look at how long it took us to get here, forty years. I'm not living that long, y'all. Some of them.
You never know.
Like me to end this week.
Could you imagine a ninety-year-old Peggy Smith?
Hey, my grandmother was ninety-eight.
Okay. Here is the map of the area that we have been discussing that would fall into that traditional neighborhood development. It would be in what you have kind of referred to as Milltown Village. And that was basically because earlier on in the year, we had put an overlay on it, it was called the Milltown Village Overlay. It allowed for a higher density housing, mixed use in there. You could put stores and businesses and things like that into those areas. And we just take this, in this case, that is the area that we're talking about. And the concept of that is that we would be working to, most of, all the things that we need to do, the zoning, that sort of stuff, is already in the UDC. And in this case, what we're talking about is developing the concept of things we need to do, cul-de-sac-ing some roads, working on public-private partnerships to get high-density housing into the area and those kind of things. And that's what we were really looking at with Milltown Village.
All right. Yes, sir.
Vernon Compton, fifty-one forty-nine Center Street. Brian, could you explain the cul-de-sac-ing, the purpose behind that and where it would be located?
Well, the cul-de-sac-ing that we had looked at was a couple of areas. One would be like here in, let me.
Madison Street, right there at the trail, Vernon, would not cut through to the school and.
Whoop. Uh-oh. Let me get over here. Let's see, probably the best example would be right here on Madison. You know, in this case, right here, instead of being a cut-through that goes all the way through, we could cul-de-sack this. This area would be able to make the D's business right there. You cul-de-sack this, it doesn't cross the road anymore. Like in this case, we'd have to, here is, we'd have to build a road here so that you'd have two points of egress for emergency services. But you could look here. Another place would be, I'm trying to make sure I got there, Spark, right here, you know, to do this road. There's two points of egress into here, get in there. It is to stop the traffic flow through a neighborhood, to make it more neighborhood-like to where the people that drive in there are people who live there, work there, that sort of thing. And it's not a pass-through, not a cut-through from Stewart to Broad. You know, take some of that traffic, push it to the signalized intersections at Park and Berry Hill and Munson, and, you know, to do that. The people who are just passing through, go to one of the signalized intersections, work you where you want to go, not through the middle of the, you know, if we built a town home, a group of townhomes along Madison down here for some reason, and the people are, you know, the townhomes don't have a lot of yard, your kids are out in front, it's not traffic whizzing back and forth, we're trying to make it more neighborhood-like.
Yeah, I like the concepts that you have in the overlay, but the one, the one issue is the cul-de-sac-ing, because I can appreciate you trying to slow down traffic or make it safer for the community, but having a grid or a connected system of streets is what makes Milton work well.
Vernon, it's also, I tell you, it is just a concept. If we start looking at it, anytime we were to do anything, like if we were going to come back and look the calls up, it would have to be approved by the council.
Was there a cul-de-sack planned in that, that concept for Berry Hill Street at Stewart?
I mean, we.
Too much traffic on that one.
It's not a completely developed plan.
I just, all I'm asking is, I like the overall, what you're trying to do with this, it's just the transportation element of it. I agree with safety and making it more community, but I think you can do that with speed limits and stop signs, but keep your streets open so people have as many connections and they're not funneled out to just one or two roads. That's how you move traffic better in our community and still slow it down.
I want my sidewalk.
Question, Vernon? That's really probably what we talked about one time before about solving the issues on Highway ninety.
Exactly. It's creating a grid. Most communities, what happens with a lot of state highways, everything gets funneled onto one road, and communities don't have a connection of roads. So in Milton, we're fortunate to have a lot of these, that other communities don't. So I wouldn't want to take those away. I'd want to solve the problems that Brian is talking about by other means, but keep our road system.
All right, thank you. Did we have a motion and second on this item? We did not.
I'll make a motion that we prove it in concept only, let Brian, for research on it, come back to us with something a little more significant to look at.
Motion by Councilman Holly, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Snow, discussion. Thinking that there is none, please vote. And the motion passes with one nay. All right, moving on, we have item eight forty-one, that is Doc's Courtyard Cafe. The committee recommends with the closing of Doc's Courtyard Cafe to notify Mr. Dr. Rinaldi that the incentive agreement between the city of Milton and Doc's Courtyard Cafe is found in default, and no credit for the incentive package will be given, and that requires a vote.
No move.
A motion from Councilman Smith?
Second.
Second from Councilman Snow, discussion.
So that means that the forty-three thousand dollars that George talked about earlier, he will get an invoice for that?
No.
Is that what that means?
No.
There was no collection, is what he said.
Well, that's what I thought, but why is it no credit for the incentive package?
The credit that we're talking about here is really is any place that has paid or has been fully paid up for an impact fee, that parcel gets the credit for that, and it stays with that parcel. Like, if he had paid for, you know, eight thousand dollars worth of impact fee, and he had worked his way through the program and, and, you know, got his five years and done, then that eight thousand dollars, whether he gave us the money or not, would have been credit to that lot, whether he left and somebody else came or not.
But those incentive packages are going to be rewritten where they default. They'll have to come back, is that not correct? We talked about that.
It is, in fact, if you read the packages, if you default from the package, but your business stays open. In this case, if Doc's Courtyard Cafe had remained open, but it did not meet the job requirements or any of those requirements that were in the initial package, then we would go to him and go, hey, you know, you didn't, you know, you said you were going to open a restaurant and hire ten people, and you only hired five, you know, so we're not getting the return that we're supposed to out of this, so you owe us the money back. You didn't live up to your half of the bargain. But the fact that, you know, his business closed, you know, there is no current usage for that purpose now. It's not like, there is no impact to the system from Doc's Courtyard Cafe. So what we say here is, okay, you closed, you defaulted on the agreement, but we're not going to give a credit to it. So if you come back next week and say, hey, I want to reopen my store, we're going to say, okay, you owe me so much money.
And in the future, if this happens, can this package not be rewritten to where, okay, he's had that for what, three years or whatever, or the amount of time? Then he should have to pay some portion, just like every other business has to pay?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But I won't, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Thinking there is none, please vote. Motion passes with one nay. Moving on to item seven seventy-six, we have the Article sixteen, sign standards, sixteen dash three, prepared with signs. Committee recommends approval of the Unified Development Code amendments pertaining to win signs, which you should have received in your packet. We have a motion to approve.
No move.
Motion for Councilman Lowery, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Hathaway, discussion.
Yes, I have a question, please. Forgive me, I have my husband's glasses, one pair of them, anyway. These pages aren't numbered, so, but it's number two here, I think it's the last page probably in that, where it says, businesses in multi-tenant complexes shall be limited to one win sign. In no case shall the total number of win signs exceed four. Well, I mean, that's four for the entire complex? And what if there's more than four tenants? I mean, who makes that decision on what four tenants hit the win signs?
I think that would be the first four that show up here and ask for a permit.
It's only a temporary sign, anyway, so that permit, that permit will run out.
They might, you know, one of them will only be good for thirty days, the next guy might be able to have one next month, they can come in and ask for one.
Well, in the package I read, they can get it, or a new tenant can get it, in a way, for like the next year, they can get four permits at thirty, thirty days, and consecutively therefore on while they're there.
Yes, ma'am. So I think the way it reads is, with the establishment of the new thing, if you get this, you're, in the first year, you get the first permit, and then you get three more chances, that thirty-day, it gets you up to one hundred and twenty days. And then the next year, it's not a first one, it's just four renewals of the permit. Really, it gives each business an opportunity for four thirty-day periods to use the win signs.
But this wouldn't give each business that opportunity?
No, right. On a multi-tenant, like a shopping mall that's got five or eight businesses in it, it would say, no, only four of you at a time can have one. There's no more than four of the signs for a multi-tenant building.
And can we do that legally, Heather? I mean, can we say only the first four come in and the next four can't have it?
I'm sorry, but I, I wasn't aware of any questions on this. I haven't studied that. I can look into it if you want me to.
I wish you would, because I personally, I mean, if I was the fifth tenant, I would feel like I was being unfairly that just because the first four went in, and there was four more vacant buildings there, that I couldn't have a win sign to promote my business, but they can. So I just feel like we're just not, this is not being fair to all the business tenants within a complex. I just don't see why the first four can be allowed, and the rest of them, oh, well, I'm sorry, you went there first.
Did we approve, we approve the document tonight? And of course, you come back next week and with, with an amendment to her motion that it be altered to make a change in case we face a situation like?
If you like, if you want to move it to council, and then during the course of the week, we'll try to work out a, something that, you know, some changes to it that would allow for, I guess I want to say that every, if there's ten tenants in a place, that you could have ten of them.
Well, maybe they could alternate. I mean, I don't know what the right answer is to make it a good curb appeal, but it just needs something creative.
And who is going to enforce this? I understand what you're saying, and I think if it's a brand-new complex, that you might, would allow all of them, but after that first initial period, whatever you would like to do, ninety days, then if you have ten shops in there, then only four at a time per month can do.
I also think that the, I'd have to go back and read again, but I think the grand opening portion is still available. You know, if you're having your grand opening, you get thirty days' worth, and you could, because it's your grand opening. So if a new store were to open, you, you'd get them because it's your grand opening, not because you're having some special event, your store's been there forever and you had your special event.
Okay.
I understand that, but I'm talking about the years thereafter where they can repeat myself in four, just four tenants, and I couldn't be allowed one because for the first thirty days.
I didn't think it was visual junk. I like them. And, you know, I was told I was stupid, and it's visual garbage, blah, 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 and I'm like, okay. Those wind feathers don't bother me one bit. They don't distract me from driving or anything else. But I know that they'll, there are people who will keep them up there until they're ratty.
Thank you.
And, you know, faded and whatever. So you can't give them everything, because then you have no rules for compliance, so.
Well, there's already rules for that, for ragged and ratty and all that.
Well, Brian, if you, if you got anything over four as far as number of businesses there, they're only going to get four months' worth of flags, so.
They'll have to work together.
They'll have to, I mean.
It's kind of like a, you know, like, for example, like you have a multi-person, multi-business shopping center, they all have to share the sign, and they take turns, like the little.
The bottom line, I think for that, if you look at this as the way, if you look at a multi-tenant shopping mall, there could be four feather signs out there all the time, but it wouldn't be the same four feather. It would be this month, these four guys have one, next month, those four guys have one, and then they rotate through, and then they can, somebody else might come back in and get another one.
If it's a generic flag sign, though, I mean, I mean, as me driving by, I wouldn't necessarily know what business that belonged to. I mean, why would you?
Well, in this case, what we're saying is, I think the flag would be to a business. It would be for a business to put up there and say, you know, you know, Joe's Grocery Store or whatever.
Okay.
How about, how about the guy that's at the pizza place waving, does he count as a feather sign, too? Is that deducted from the total?
I'm, I'm sure there's probably something in there.
If he's wearing a shirt, does that count as two feather signs?
Just clarity in the verbiage, that's it.
I can check into this for your next meeting and check with Randy and explore the League of Cities, because these things have been studied. There are standards that are recommended to all cities, and if this is deviating from the standard in any way, I'll find out why.
All right. Do we have a motion, we have a second? Any further discussion?
So, what exactly is the motion?
Who, who made the motion?
I think Sharon, didn't you?
Sharon made the motion.
I didn't make.
You want to change?
I did the.
Okay.
It's Peggy. Been so long, I don't remember.
I don't either.
I remove, I remove my motion, and we'll defer to our next meeting when our attorney will come back with more information.
I second that.
So in that case, what we're doing is, we're going to move it to council, not to the consent agenda, and we'll try to answer some of these questions by next.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Smith, second from Councilwoman Hathaway, any discussion?
I just want to make clear that everybody understands to be fair to everybody, that's all.
That's been the theme of this whole meeting.
Thank you.
I'm beginning to wonder, okay? But thank you.
Today's Councilman's is brought to you by the letter F, fair. All right, any other discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we can go a lot of ways with that. All right, moving on, we have item four, eight, eight forty-five, a property purchased at fifty-three sixty Broad Street. The committee recommends placing the property at fifty-three sixty Broad Street under contract for eighty-five thousand dollars and obtain appraisal for said property.
I'm sorry, what are we buying that for?
Well, at the last city council, we had a long presentation about the future development of that, that end of Broad Street. Brian, did you get an appraisal?
The appraisal is underway.
Okay.
Correct. We do have the property under contract. Uh, we do have the property under contract, so that, coming out of the committee hole, I thought the direction from council was to go get it under contract, so we'd have it. We've got until the thirty-first of March to close. We have an appraisal underway, and a boundary survey that are being conducted. Go from there.
Have any of the other abutting properties, either this one, that's between all these other properties, have those property owners been contacted about possibly selling their property to the city?
Yes. Well, not selling to the city, but we did meet with one of the other property owners about working with us on, um, a, a project that we were looking at for multifamily houses. So, we are in the process of working with other property owners to try to get some of that built-town-village concept upstart.
Exactly, I just didn't want to say us locked in with that one little sliver of land, and nothing to do with it.
We had to look on the map, the, I was like, the address on Broad Street doesn't tell me anything.
Were you here, were you here, coming to the hole?
I was.
Yeah.
And Oma, and I had met with them, or with Big Map in their office. I had to see the water there to remind me, here on Broad Street is.
It's the one with the house, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's, it, it's valued much higher than that.
This, it, it's that piece of property right there. This is the, the marina, this is the, the, uh, nursing home, um, this is a private piece of property, this is the one we're talking about, right here.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have, do we have a motion to approve it?
Do we not have one?
Nope, we don't, we don't have.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilwoman Smith, we have discuss, do we, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Hathaway, all right. Uh, discussion. Think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes with one nay. All right. Moving on to page four, we have the Parks and Rec Committee, Councilwoman Snow.
Sorry, my new glasses trying to read. Item eight fifteen, committee recommends approval of event application for scratch ankle on April thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Snow, second, Councilwoman Lowry, discussion. And I know there's been a lot of talk about scratching, or going back to the Stewart Street, um, but of course, uh, one thing that we've talked about in the past, uh, is the cost of that, uh, the infrastructure, so, looks like it's gonna stay on in downtown for the time being.
I don't think there's any way you'll ever get DOT to approve you back on Stewart Street.
Yeah, and plus, the, 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 uh, infrastructure cost.
That's correct.
That was, that was the reason it was given to me by staff on that one, but, uh, any other discussion? Please vote.
Pass it again.
Karen, again?
Karen?
Karen.
Oh. And the motion passes unanimously, all right. We have the event, oh, go ahead.
Uh, item eight sixteen, event application for bans on the Blackwater Spring two thousand eighteen. Committee recommends approval of event application for bans on Blackwater Spring two thousand eighteen. Put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Councilman Snow, second from Councilwoman Hathaway, discussion. Think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
Item eight thirty-six, event application for two, two thousand eighteen Glow Run Five K. Committee recommends approval of the two thousand eighteen Glow Run Five K event application. Put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
I have a, a motion from Councilman Snow, second from Councilwoman Johnson, discussion.
Cost of the cross, closing the roads and barricades.
Brian?
Not really a cost.
That's right, I, I think in this case, uh, from last discussion with Johnny, is I don't think there'll be any of that. They're gonna try to stay the sidewalks and local areas, so it, it will really be at very little cost, if any cost.
I think we were just out on the porch when they all ran by, and we just hollered at them and threw water.
All right.
It was through the neighborhoods, is what I'm saying, it wasn't any major artery.
Any other discussion? Think there is none, please vote.
Hopefully, you didn't throw it like Eagle fans.
And the motion passes.
I handed them a bottle of water, goof, I didn't spray them with the hose, they were all painted. We hadn't got blowed in the dark.
Okay.
Uh, item eight forty-four, Russell Harbor Boat Launch. Committee recommends naming the Russell Harbor Boat Launch after former Councilman Lloyd Highnote. Put that in a form of a motion.
Exactly.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman, uh, Snow, a second from the entire council.
That'll work.
That'll work for the record, um, we all loved Councilman Highnote. Uh, discussion?
Yes, we still haven't said anything about Councilman White. Do we have any suggestions?
Yes, we, we actually had several discussion, to try to come up with several ideas about what we could do, planting trees, community gardens, things like that, that we could do, I mean, we haven't, I mean, from our standpoint, if anybody has a suggestion, we'll be happy to take it, but.
What was that for?
We are for Councilman White. To come up with something to honor Councilman White.
Well, with the, the, the issue at hand, though, is the boat launch for Councilman Highnote, so we'll come back later with something for Councilman, um, you know, well, I mean, Highnote.
We planted a tree, that was my thing, if we planted a tree, now we're gonna name Boat Dock, we ain't done anything for Clayton, Clayton's been dead longer.
Well.
Why don't I, why don't I reach out to, uh, to some of his family?
Already have.
Oh, well, do they have any suggestions? Or other than, we should have already done something?
Well, the suggestions were a community, community garden, or, or Boat Dock, because he was, uh, he loved that river, too, so.
He loved to camp, so why don't we do down at the marina, in the, in the plans, that's where there's gonna be an RV park on there?
Yeah.
Shouldn't we name that Clayton's Camping, whatever?
Well, that hasn't been totally decided yet.
That hasn't been completely decided.
But something down there could be easily, sure.
We have boat launches at Carpenter's Park, we have, we have a bunch of them there, they're helping named.
How about a Christmas tree? Put it down there.
No, I think, I, I like, um, the concept, when Carpenter's Park gets redone, and all those boat launches, that would be very appropriate. And, and anyone who didn't know who he was, every time they launched, would ask. You know, we could have a little plaque of, you know, I mean, they were a long time, you know, with, still in business, don't, don't, I don't mean that, but I mean, you know, they weren't like, from the eighteen twenties, but they were a good long time.
There's a consensus understanding that we'll do that, but, uh, the question at hand right now is Councilman Highnote, so.
Right.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? Any further discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Snow, for that report. Uh, next up, we have the Public Safety Committee, that's chaired by Councilwoman Lunsford.
Committee approves for police pension board fifth pointy. Make a motion, funding source.
There's no funding for that.
No funding?
The appointment of Bill Cranz.
And there's really, council, there's nothing you can do about it.
No.
It, it's a, it's, it's a ministerial duty, they appoint him, you just have to.
Yeah, do we have a motion to approve? Do you put that in a form of motion, uh, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman, we have a motion from Councilwoman Lunsford, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson, discussion?
That, that fills the, the board, right? No vacancies, okay, thank you.
I think so, on the police board.
All right.
And, well, that's what I'm talking about.
I assume we've already spoken with him?
Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously, thank you for that report, Councilman Lunsford. Now we move on to the Public Works Committee, uh, uh, Councilman Lowry.
Uh, commercial sanitation, RFP, committee recommends rejecting all bids and develop commercial recycling rate scale. This is a first up. Um, this is the same one we got before, but we've talked about, um.
That, this was the RFP we went out to outsource commercial sanitation service, and all the bids, we got two bids back. One was thirteen percent above our current rate, and one was twenty-three percent above our current rate. So, uh, in this case, what we'd like to do, because we need to do, we need to notify the bidders, number one is to, uh, like I say, uh, uh, reject all bids, so that we can clear the, we clear the table with the two bidders, and then we'll get back to the business of how we're gonna make sure that we keep our sanitation program funded.
Recycling rate scale.
That is correct, the, the, and the commercial recycling, we run, we currently do commercial recycling at no charge.
Well, that was what was confusing to me.
Right, to, to a business. Commercial sanitation is one thing, we charge them, we have a rate for that. We do, uh, commercial recycling for, I think it's about twenty, fifteen or twenty businesses in the city, uh, at no charge. And that was okay when the county didn't charge us anything to take it to the recycling center. Well, now, we have to pay thirty-two bucks a ton to get it across, and it is now also, um, a very high workload. Some of them have a lot of recycling, you know, so we, at this point, what we recommend is that we say, okay, if we want to continue the recycling program, we're gonna have to find some way, at least to pay the thirty-two bucks a ton to get it across scale, you know? You know, maybe we do a very reduced rate, you know, just enough to pay the tipping fees, or something like that, but we, we have to come up with some, I think, some, some way to.
Residential pays a fee, so.
Five bucks a month, yes, sir.
So, commercial should too, but.
Does that part, uh, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna make the motion that we, um, reject all those bids and do, start looking at our own.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Snow, discussion?
Uh, Brian, do we need to, uh, add to this motion, anything with the funding, as, as far as where we're gonna go with that, or you're gonna come back to us?
I don't think so, I, I, I think we'll come back for that, uh, probably over the course of the budget development for, uh, two thousand nineteen, for the twenty nineteen budget. It, it will include recommendations for rate changes, if, if we're gonna hold on to and do, uh, sanitation.
All right. Any other discussion? Think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
Number eight thirty-nine, Russell Harbor Landing Erosion. Uh, committee recommends placing erosion control on Russell Harbor Road. Did you ever talk to the?
I did, I spoke to him, um, he, he is running up the chain of, of his superiors to get permission to travel over here, and look at what we got, and talk to us. In this case, if you want to send this back to committee, you could send it back to committee, and after, hopefully, he said he'd try to be over here sometime this week, and then we can do that, and talk about it.
Okay. What he's talking about is, I met a gentleman at the, um, um, bark committee that has some ideas for handling this erosion. So, I would like to move it back to committee, and make that a motion.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilwoman Smith, discussion? Think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, uh, backyard pickup garbage exemptions for two thousand eighteen. Committee recommends a list of names for backyard pickup and garbage exemptions approved for two thousand eighteen. Um, I did notice that one of the, uh, the one we talked about on Dogwood, is it on there?
He bit.
Oh, okay. All right, so I make that a motion, that we approve this, these lists?
Second.
I got a motion from Council, Lowry, second, Councilman Snow, discussion? Think there is none, please vote.
I keep hitting the button, and it's just not.
Okay, and, um, eight thirty-three, speed bumps on Savannah Drive. Committee recommends removing the speed bumps on Savannah Drive, and I make that a motion.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilman Snow.
Will you, will you recycle the speed?
I think they're concrete, right?
Yeah, they're concrete, so, they'll be chipped out, and we'll repave over where they were. Um, and apart, the whole purpose of this is because we, um, we have just released outer and cellar drives to, um, the paving, the paving company, they'll come in and fix those, and then we are now, Savannah Drive and Berry Hill are the next on the list. We're going in, doing any curb work, any corrections, anything we need to do, and in this case, in Savannah, because they have the two speed bumps up there, we're either gonna have to work into the process, in this case, or, or take them out, so that we can repave that section of road.
When is that starting?
Um, outer and cellar, uh, Savannah Drive will probably be a while, because once we spend all our money, a little bit comes back. But outer and cellars, we have talked to Panhandle Paving, and they're coming back to us on when they can work this into their schedule.
And we will have their signs up for that one, too? The.
The, yeah, you're funded by, yes, sir.
Tax.
But Savannah, um, drive, the speed bumps can be taken out at the same time that they resurface? So, there's no extra charge?
Have to come out first, don't they?
Yeah, probably what we'll do, we'll go up and take them out, so we're not, so, that's not something Panhandle will charge us to do, you know?
Think we can, be done in-house easily?
Yeah, yep.
We could get out some anger, Sharon, you wanna go down there and swing?
I would pay to see that.
I bet you would, mayor.
All right, any other discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you for that report, Councilman Lowry. Uh, earlier in the, in the meeting, we had, uh, a request from Councilwoman Hathaway, she had two items, and we're now on council reports, so Councilwoman Hathaway, you have the floor.
Okay, um, I was reading over the charter, and on section two, four, powers and duties, um, C, the power of appointment and removal of officers, employees of the city is vested in the city manager, unless otherwise provided in this charter by ordinance. Um, and I would like to amend that, um, and add this paragraph that I'm going to read. I want the city current ordinance to reflect the following statement and/or sentiment. The powers of appointment and removal of officers and employees of the city is vested in the city manager, and in some cases, the city council. City manager shall have decision-making authority in all aspects of employee management. However, the city council shall have a final approval by a majority vote, and the hiring and termination decisions for all contracted employees to include the police chief, fire chief, and all department supervisors with or within the city, as well as a special magistrate and public information officer. All said contracted employees and supervisors shall be renominated and reaffirmed by the city council at the June city council meetings each year. In such case, council's decision shall be the final decision with supervisors and contracted employees.
Sounds like Councilman Snow gave, gave you an idea.
May I have a copy of that?
No, I didn't. Yeah, I made one for you.
All right, did, did you put that in the form of a?
Yes, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, please.
Second.
It, it can't be passed right now, you know that, right? It's gotta be studied.
The charter.
We've already talked about this before.
Yeah.
Is a charter change, and I, I ask that you please not make a motion to pass a charter change right now.
Why is that?
Because this has been studied before, before you were councilwoman, and it's been previously advised to this council that this is a mistake, change the charter by changing the authority. Uh, we have a form of government that involves the, and I'm sorry, I, I wasn't prepared.
No, you're fine, I just, like, can you show me the proof that, I mean?
If, if, if I may, just, a second here.
Go for it.
This, this basically is sitting now in the administrative subcommittee, um, and that was with Councilman Powell. And it's, the, the, basically, the same motion is still there. Um, and if you want to, I think in this case, it's still there, if you want to have an administrative subcommittee, or you want to pull it out of committee, move it back up to committee, then we can do that, but that motion is still sitting in subcommittee, basically, right now.
And I, I realize you may not be aware of that history, and I wasn't aware, I had no idea you were gonna bring this up this evening, or you and I could have talked about this, but this has been.
I mean, we can definitely sit down and talk about it, and.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to, it's just, at administrative subcommittee, this has been discussed more than once. Councilman Powell is the chair of that subcommittee. We haven't called a meeting again for a while, but this seems like a good time, and I was just looking for him, and he stepped away. Where we, we should probably call another meeting, so we could flesh this out, and, and again, also, if you don't mind my adding, the prior language that was suggested is different from what you've suggested, I'd like to read it and study it.
Yeah, please.
That I can present a word.
I mean, how does that work, as far as the subcommittee, with him not being admin committee, now that I am?
You are now the committee chairman, so, if you'd like to call a subcommittee meeting, then call the subcommittee meeting.
Absolutely.
Well, before we get too far ahead, um, as procedure, um, the city, what we've heard is the city attorney has advised against this, um, and we did have a motion, we have a second, that was, and do, do you, uh, wish to proceed, or do you want to rescind those motions?
I would like to proceed.
Proceed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
May, may I ask why?
And then just have the two readings, and then me and you need, can sit down and discuss.
May I ask you why you're pressing to have this done, when I've asked you to please wait?
I'm not pressing to have it done, but I feel like that it is important, and it should be in the charter.
Could you explain to me what's important about it, so I can better understand the policy?
I think the other thing we need to understand here is that, I think we had previously established that this would be a charter change, which would have to be a vote of the public, so, it would be really, we're not changing, you can't do readings in its end, it's really, would be, have to make a recommendation to the people to vote on, uh, charter.
Or, that's what I was gonna ask, just because I hadn't got back to Heather, I put it back on that, but just, that's what I was gonna wait for discussion. Do we have a legal, do you have a legal opinion on whether it's gonna be a charter change, or an ordinance change?
Absolutely a charter change, the form of government means, he, for the city of Milton, involves the city manager having the authority to hire and fire, from a legal perspective, as I've explained before, Councilwoman Hathaway was, was here. It's absolutely a liability concern, on my part, having the experience that I have, this is not a good idea. And we can talk about it in depth, at a special meeting, where we can have a full, robust discussion about it again, and go into new concerns, new ideas, whatever y'all want to discuss, it's fine with me, I'm just saying that it's, it's very out of the ordinary for something like this, for, for, to be, to be moved.
You may feel that way, but I was just recently appointed to that committee, and so, me making these changes honestly, isn't out of the ordinary, in my opinion.
I respect your concerns, but I don't understand why it is, and you didn't have an orientation that we ordinarily have for new council people. I would love to know why it is that you believe this needs to be done today.
Well, Heather, Heather, can I interrupt? Well, Heather, Heather, can I interrupt? Wouldn't it be just your job to be the legal aspect of that, and not worrying about whether, what her opinion would be, or mine, or anyone else's?
My job is to protect you from yourselves, and I've asked you, I've asked you not to do this so many times. I do not understand why it's being brought up again. I just want another legal side of it.
A legal opinion versus a personal opinion is.
It's not my personal opinion, it's my legal opinion.
Okay, well.
And I've made it several times.
Again.
I don't need you to talk to me like I'm a kid, okay?
I'm trying to understand why you're insulting me by suggesting that I am giving you a personal opinion.
Hey, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna have order, order, order.
I would like to understand if you're accusing me of giving a personal opinion here today.
I was trying to get clarification. I wasn't accusing you of anything. I was trying to get a clarification. That's all I was trying to do. You took it a little too personal.
I appreciate your clarification.
Again, what I might recommend is it is basically sitting in subcommittee, and really what you need to do is pull it up for discussion. Either have a subcommittee meeting and talk about it, or pull it up to, you know?
Can we pull it up for discussion? I mean, I mean, I don't understand how that type of works, because I didn't ask for a subcommittee, and that was obviously before me, so.
The reason why I'm confused is because typically, when we have major changes, we have committees where we discuss them. It is not ordinarily discussed, like a robust topic like this, as part of a council person's report at the, towards the end of an agenda, and we actually have much more business still to handle tonight, that the city manager hasn't yet had a chance to bring up. And so it seems to me that having a robust discussion on this topic now would be possibly premature or counterproductive, because it's gonna take a good amount of time to do.
And that's fine, but I mean.
That's, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We have someone at the podium that can be recognized?
Just a minute.
Thank you.
Are we done with?
I haven't said anything.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Al Bruton, sixty, sixty-three.
Well, hold on, before, before I allow for discussion, I'm not, I'm not sure if we had, if we, if we've officially had a motion, a second on this.
Can't have a motion on it.
What's that?
We did have a second.
You did have a second.
Yeah, Peggy seconded.
Do we, do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Who was the second?
Peggy.
Okay, Councilman Smith, okay, discussion, yes, sir.
Al Bruton, sixty-three, sixty-three, Breckenridge Drive. We've, Heather, we've been down this road before, and with this duties of the city manager. And it was tabled and put in committee. Are you gonna just put it right back in committee again? What's the, what's the?
Like I said, that was before me, but I'm not doubting him by any means, so I hope you don't feel that way. But I do think that the city council should have a say-so and, and the, you know, contracted employees that we have here.
Well, like I said, that's already been discussed. And the last awards banquet for the Santa Rosa County Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Brian Watkins was nominated and named the man of the year.
He does a great job. Please, everybody clap for that.
Well, and let's leave it at that. But, and I can speak on my personal opinion on it. And this, we're coming back up again, you know, we're trying to kick the can down the road again. Just leave the first motion, I guess, in, in committee, and we're gonna, we're gonna stand the battle again. But, you know, that, it, it needs to go before the people and the council, in my terminology, for what I've, I've seen on it, don't have the final say-so on it. And I agree with the, well, the attorney, she's, she's have it there, and you're new, but it's the, you're basically saying the same thing. And we know what the bottom line is, is to, you know, just relinquish some of his duties, but the man is doing it.
I didn't ask for relinquishment of any of his duties. I just asked for the city council to have a say-so in any contracted employees. I didn't relinquish any of his duties at all.
Well, that's what you're trying to do.
No, no, I'm not. Trust me, he does a great job.
Well, if he's doing a good, great job, leave him alone.
I'm not messing with him. But thank you, I'm not.
Heather, can I ask you?
We're gonna, we're not gonna have banner back and forth, just.
Okay, all right. Well, but I'm just saying that it's in committee, let's, you know, 'cause I won't, I would like to see it come out and, and forget it altogether. But, you know.
I understand your point. Thank you so much.
And from that side to that side, we'll be coming up in September, and the people will decide that, that, too.
Okay.
Sure, sure will.
Heather, just if this, or, and Brian, if, if this motion, you know, after discussion, moves forward, or passes, I should say, and we get, I guess, as much information as Ms. Hathaway might wanna, once she has a talk, we can always, or she could, she's the one that made the motion, but withdraw that? Is that where we would go next, or, or just vote it down?
Well, well, the bottom line is, at some point in time, even if, I think if you pass the motion today, and you say you're gonna make this change by ordinance, we're still gonna have to draft an ordinance. And, you know, in that case, if your motion would be for us to draft an ordinance to make this change, whether we can get that done by Tuesday, you know, or go from there. Or, in this case, it would have to be at some point in time the discussion as to whether, you know, is it a charter change, or is it an ordinance? You're gonna have to make that decision first, I think.
That's a charter change.
And if you deem it's, you know, it's a charter change, then really what we're doing is we're crafting language to, you know, to put on the ballot. We've already got at least one thing on the ballot, the term limits, which you're gonna see at the committee hall. In this case, if you want to add this, you know, we could, we could do that also.
There was another one, too. Do we have to have a charter change to officially change how, or set up how we do replacement?
Yes, we have to change the thirty-day, the thirty-day limit on replacing it, and that's, that's specifically written if, if a councilman resigns. The charter specifically says you have thirty days to do it. And in that case, that would be, so the three that are on there, or the two that are, the one that you've actually voted on, I think, is the thing, and I think you voted on the thirty-two.
We voted on two.
So you've got those two that are, that are up there.
All right. Well, we do have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Think there is none, please vote. And the motion passes with four a, four yes, a's, and, and three nays. All right. You had a second item, Ms. Hathaway?
Oh, I just wanted to get a follow-up on the historic district in the Mount Pilgrim church. Do y'all have any information on that? Because I haven't heard from anybody at all.
Yes, I have, I spoke with the planning department. They have surveyed all of the properties. I think they have, I think there was, I looked at all the properties. You have to survey the properties, you have to go to the property presby, see each one, then whether they have been permits pulled to substantially change the houses that were over the age. I know they've worked on that, they've got that list. And next thing that they still had to do was to go and do a, basically, visual survey of those. And then, at that point, and I think it was to, I think that was being run through the Historic Preservation Board, I believe. That would go back to the H.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Can, can I jump on that, think about that, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Councilwoman.
I got, I'm the chairman, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman, Mayor. I'm sorry.
You can ask her, but she can't.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if he was still talking about. I apologize. And can I have the floor? Before we go to, you know, I call it the South End of Milton, okay? And I know a lot of people that live up there, and they're good people. And there's a lot of historical structures up there. But I'm not at all sure. I mean, I do not understand how this is gonna work, but I do know that it's probably gonna cost the city about, gonna cost us thousands upon thousands of dollars to have this designated as a historical district. With that being said, that, that's not the main issue that, that I'm thinking. I'm thinking the people that live in these historical structures, do they understand what it means to be, to own a contributing historical structure within a historic district? I mean, they have to get permission to, Heather, do you know what they have to have permission to do?
Enlighten me.
It depends. Part of it depends, Sharon, on, on the way the historic district was formulated. But yes, you're right. There, there are issues with painting, with remodeling, what vernacular materials you can use.
Exactly.
And it depends on how much teeth were in the district when it was written. I mean, when they wrote the historic district that I would live in now, based on the age of the house, they closed it. So you didn't, like, grow up to be a hundred and get in?
Right.
You were in, or you weren't?
Right.
And you could apply, but, you know.
But I'm saying.
It's the way it was written.
They need to know that to have their house, if they want to paint their house, they have to come up and get permission from the city, they have to meet a certain historic color chart on the Sherwin-Williams, blah, 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 blah. They want to change out a window, they want to change the roof. These people need to know what the pros and cons are. And, and if I can finish, Mr. Sandborn.
Well, you'll get your chance.
They need to know what the pros and cons are to be within this historic district, you know. I mean, I think it's a good thing if the people want to do it, but I think that everybody down there needs to understand what's involved in taking this action.
Ms. Holly, I totally agree. I think everybody should be notified and have time and be able to voice their opinion, and whatever we need to do.
Let's have a workshop and let them come in and say, you know, or have a charrette type thing, and, and go from there before we just start jumping out there saying, oh, this is gonna be a historic district. Like it.
I think that the people still have the right to not participate, even if the district is created.
I don't know.
I think it depends on how it's written. Mr. Sandborn might be able to answer that.
Jack Sandborn, sixty-four, eighty-four, Old Baghdad Highway, Milton, Florida. And I agree with Mrs. Holly, the, it's a good idea to educate everybody. One of the big advantages are the income tax credit that you get for any improvements you make, and that encourages investors. And if it's just a historic structure, you get a ten percent credit. Now, that's not a deduction, that is an actual credit on your income taxes. And if it's in a historic district designated, you get a twenty percent credit. So there's some big advantages, and you ought to educate people on both sides.
Yeah, that, that would be great, if you could get that information together for people to have. Appreciate that, thank you.
And I, and I also think, you know, there's, there's also the value of protection for those historic assets. I know in that, that neighborhood, several years ago, there was a home that, that was almost threatened to be torn down, the historic Finkelstein House. Ms. Margot had passed away, and there was a threat for it to be demolished, as I understood at the time. And a group purchased it, and, and I guess has plans, or I'm not sure what the, what the status is of, of the restoration of the building, but it wasn't torn down. But I think had that, that whole district been included in, in a district, I think there's, there's the element of protection. And so that, the assets that are there, because you gotta remember, architecture is a part of your culture, too.
I understand that.
And so, and so I think that, that the, the whole area, whether it be Mary Street, Susan Street, that, that whole Martin Luther King block down there, if you just walk the streets, there's some beautiful homes there from the nineteen twenties and thirties. Yeah. And they, they have a lot to offer. And there definitely can be some restoration, there can be some, some period infill as well.
There could be. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying the people just need to be informed of the pros and cons. That's all.
Totally correct, Sharon.
I'm not asking for a debate, I'm just saying.
I think we're all in agreement.
Want the, okay, thank you.
That is correct. I would think that would be a normal part of the process, anyway. Notification, so that they will know.
Well, I would think a lot of things we've done should be a lot of notification, but it just hadn't rolled that way, Ms. Johnson.
Well, that, that might be true, but we don't wanna segment things out, you know?
Right.
Because of some like or dislike. But I, I wanna, once again, thank Heather for bringing that point up, because it's long overdue.
I agree.
Oh, well, I agree with that. I mean, some of those structures are beautiful down there.
All of them are.
To be preserved, you know?
All of them are. They need to be preserved. A lot of contributing factors in that area.
Yeah, and then a lot of them need some help, and I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Michael Johnson, forty-six oh-one Forsyth Street. Keep in mind, demolition by neglect. Because what'll happen when you reserve an historic district, there'll be some people who have no funds, cannot get funds, and will not care about the house they're living in. One of the downsides to Old Baghdad is we do not have demolition by neglect. So if someone inherits an historic home, and a hole is knocked in the roof, and you don't have demolition by neglect, they can let the house rot down. Or they can move it to Baghdad and tear it apart, when you don't have demolition by neglect. And that's the hard part of it, because you're dealing with people with probably limited funds, and it's, it's, it's a sad thing. When people come, put a lot of money in restoring an historic house, and their neighbor, ta-da. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
And Mr. Johnson, I'd really like you to be a part of this process, as well as however the city decides, and management, administration decides that they want to go. I'd like to have your input on certain things as well, if you'd be so kind.
All right.
All right, thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Just a quick little thing. Did George Riles, I guess he left Friday. I heard somebody at my work, we were talking about bicycling, and he mentioned that George was leaving. So I, I guess he left last week?
Yes, he resigned.
Maybe if a, a department had to leave, next time, maybe you send us an email out?
I believe I did.
You did.
Well, I have a problem with my emails, so that's probably the problem. And I'm coming in to see John tomorrow.
All right, so thank, anything?
Thank you. Thank you for sending out.
That completes Heather, Heather's report, Hathaway. All right, Mayor's report. One thing I wanted to talk about briefly, we have in March, early March coming up, the annual Teacher of the Year banquet for Santa Rosa County. And I know that we have the Education Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Johnson, and I spoke to the city manager about this, and he said he spoke to Mary about it, of course. And Mary, any thoughts on this? Is this something that, that you would like to maybe get a few seats, and if not a table, or maybe a couple, maybe half a table?
That, that is something to be considered.
That's something we have to, because we'd have to go ahead and make the, make the, make the motion tonight, because we, we, we won't, the council won't meet again until after, I believe it's the beginning of March, they have the Teacher of the Year banquet.
I believe that date is right.
Yeah, so do you?
Was that March? March, March second?
Do you want to go ahead and put that in the form of a motion, and, you know, how, typically, when we do something like this, Brian, it's, it's usually, we buy a few seats?
Depends on, depends on how many, like, buying a table, how many seats you get, and how many people want to go.
Right. Probably can put the information out to them and survey to get an approximate number out. But I, I think it would be a very good idea, because many of them are already from anti- COVID, anyway.
Would we have time at the next meeting to buy the ticket? That would be my.
Is there an RSVP date? What's the RSVP date? It's four tickets for five hundred bucks.
Four tickets for five hundred?
Five hundred dollars.
Wow.
Oh.
Yeah, the RSVP is by February eighth, so.
It's four for five hundred?
Yes.
Let's buy our plaque.
I didn't realize that. Didn't realize it was that high.
I'll second that.
And we're late already?
No, no, we've still got three days.
Well.
One person is thirty. Four for five hundred, I guess that's.
That math doesn't add up.
Send everybody separately.
If you want to sit together.
That's true.
You know, we don't need to sit together anyways, because we don't want to break sunshine laws, so we can all sit.
This is, RSVP reservations at thirty dollars each. Name and company have also enclosed a contribution of a hundred dollars. Friends of Education, two fifty, a bronze sponsor for two tickets, five hundred dollar silver sponsor for up to four tickets, a thousand dollar gold sponsor for up to eight tickets, and a fifteen hundred dollar platinum sponsor for up to ten tickets. So you can either be a sponsor of the program, and basically be probably listed on there, and recognized as a sponsor for the program, or we can determine how many people want to go, and we can buy them at thirty bucks.
Yeah.
Who would like to go?
I'd like to go. What time is it?
It's at night. Where's it at?
New Orleans.
It's downtown Pensacola, New Orleans.
I'm seriously about driving, pardon.
Neither. Beth?
Do you need to know about the Navy one, or the military?
Uh, yeah, that's coming up on the agenda.
All right, just let, let Pam know if you want to go. Yes. Yes, sir.
Al Bruton, sixty-three, Breckenridge Drive. Did you guys vote on Heather's historical district?
There was no vote. I was just inquiring, getting an update. Uh, there was no vote. I was just inquiring, getting an update.
Oh, you just getting.
It's, it's already passed, but staff's already working on it.
Right. It's been passed to the Historic Preservation Board and they're working through this.
That was just for information only, because, you know, we've got a, we've got a, uh, okay, that's all I wanted to find out was.
Okay, thank you.
That we go from that. Thank you.
All right. Did you, did you try to say something?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna, because I didn't ask it to get enough, I forgot. I'm sorry. And I'm just going to get you to ask, um, Brian, if they had, um, checked into, we talked about last month, the business of the quarter, getting like a trophy to be passed around.
Uh-huh.
You know, so I was wondering if we had an update on that or if our staff's still working on that.
Uh, we're still working on that.
I'm sure that was high on his list.
Okay, I know it's on your list, so I just want to make sure.
Do we do a trophy or a plaque?
Well, I think a trophy, like on there.
Do a flag now that we have a flag on. I'm not, that was it, Jeff, that wasn't it, you?
Me and you gonna meet at speed book.
That was it, Jeff, he said flag, and I'm like, no, no flag.
I said plaque.
A plaque, yeah. Well, a trophy. That's what was given to the historical.
Sharon, Pam needs you.
They used to have a sign here that we would put front of.
There you go.
Yeah, I designed that myself, I know.
Okay.
But I don't know where it's at, but I'm just saying.
It's got to be somewhere.
It's probably too worn out and won't meet code.
It went to the scrapyard.
It was metal.
I'm just saying.
It's a warehouse.
A trophy, I mean.
The scrapyard.
This is not rocket science, just something about maybe half or three foot tall, you know, that has, uh, like business of the quarter presented by the City of Milton.
Well, can we do like a sign, um, kind of like Best of the Bay type thing where they can hang it up, like quarterly?
Yeah.
I guess so. Yeah, whatever, whatever y'all think. We're, I was just wanting people to.
Clayton White, he owned a business for decades, we could, oh, the Clayton White Business of the Month Award for Milton. He had, he had the TV.
Yeah, sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's somewhere in that planning department, I did a, uh, an analysis on how many years every business in the City of Milton has been here.
Right.
And so they should have that, and I think we need to start with the oldest and come up, you know, every quarter to recognize them. But it's, it's somewhere in that paperwork, I.
It's a project for you in the morning?
I don't want to have to look for that. I don't want to have to look for that.
But, but whatever, Heather's suggestion could come out, maybe something to bring there or.
I think it's, I think conceptually, you're all right. It's important to recognize the businesses that we have that have been here for a long time.
Yeah.
And every time we lose an anchor business, we're all like, huh, okay.
Yeah, but we've been so concentrated on new businesses, which that's a good thing, I'm not saying that's bad. But I'm saying we, we need to hold, try to hold on and recognize the ones that's been here and supported.
Yeah, especially those milestones.
Totally correct.
Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, you know.
We have a lengthy meeting ahead of us, we'll, we'll put that on the back burner. Uh, other business, Brian?
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, first item is item eight forty-six, uh, council group photo. The council group pictures will be taken Tuesday, February thirteenth at four forty-five in the council chambers. Please, uh, make plans to be here. That'll be the reshoot of the group photo next week.
Be on time, Peggy.
We all wearing black?
No, no, Heather, you be on time.
Huh?
Just kidding.
I can be on time on a Tuesday. I can never be on time on a Monday.
Are we, do we need a cut, I mean?
Next Tuesday, right.
Do we need to wear lighter color coordinate or wear whatever we want?
Whatever you want.
Whatever you want.
All right.
We've not coordinated outfits.
No jeans, but.
Well, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be able to make that.
What, what?
Excuse me?
Are you serious?
Yeah, that's the history fair. Um, I, I will be, I will be here for the council meeting, but I, but I won't be here for that. Um, you can just, uh.
Just Photoshop you in fifteen minutes?
You can just have Mr. Jernigan stand in for me and take a picture. He looks like me, um.
I mean, we can just start the, the.
What time are you planning on being here?
If you'd like us to reschedule, we'll reschedule.
I'll be, I'll be here at five thirty, uh, planning to be here.
Oh, at five thirty?
Is this a daguerreotype type camera from the eighteen hundreds you guys sit there?
No, they stage us in our heads and all that. He doesn't remember.
What? Oh, take the photo?
Given me you do it, uh, after the CRA meeting and then before the council meeting starts?
Uh, we will check with them and see if they can do it later, and then we'll, at some point in time, maybe after CRA, before the council meeting, uh, do that. Or if you want to recess the council meeting at some point in time.
There's no way I'll be here for that. Uh, there's, I've got, I've got another, if we can reschedule for March if they don't mind.
I mean, we, we can look and see whether they can come in later. If they can't, we'll look at a rescheduled date in the future, maybe March, uh, council meeting, see if we can get that done.
How about committee the whole?
Yeah.
Just sponsor. Just Pam can pick on it.
Pam can fix everything.
Or they can just, maybe they can just, they can just take a picture of me separately and like crop me hovering above everybody, you know, whatever.
Yep, prop you in.
No.
Yeah, crop him.
Okay.
Are we using that word, crop?
Crop.
That's a, that's a real thing.
Crop or Photoshop?
Heather, all y'all wear flats, because, uh, y'all look so much taller than me.
Jeff, I'm going to be nice and say that's not hard to do, but.
Let's move on.
All right.
Keep going.
All right, that was an information. Item eight forty-seven is an RFP for internal control audit, which actually will be an RFQ. Uh, council directed staff to engage an audit firm to conduct and audit the citywide internal controls. We looked at a range of options and costs to set the scope of work for the audit. Council needs to define the level of engagement and scope of work. Options recommend our internal review, expanded procedures to current audit, contract, and outside agency for review of common procedures, or go out for an RFQ with a certified audit firm with a qualifying statement. And the designated funds that would go with it. Uh, in this case, really, you've got a draft of what would be the RFQ for going out for an au, uh, outside audit firm with a qualifying statement. Is, is what you've got attached to the package, I think.
Where did this come from?
Uh, we wrote it up.
I mean, did you just write it out of the air or did you do some research?
We, we, we went back and looked at examples of, of citywide audits and then took out everything for the financial audit and left in the portions for looking at internal control.
Okay.
Uh, and let's say, looking at it, it does, like I said, it'd be fifteen to twenty K, something in there. Uh, I will tell you, we do have about thirty, I think it's thirty-four thousand in a contingency line inside the general fund, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Which one are you approving?
What are y'all approving?
I was going to say, can, can we table it for the next meeting?
This is going out for, for a bid.
Yeah, it, it'll probably have to be on the street for at least thirty days.
Well, there's four options.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I'm assuming you're, you're approving the, the RFQ for a certified audit with a qualifying statement.
Yes.
Okay.
That's number four, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. All right, is that, is that, is that, is that, is that correct, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Lunsford, she makes second discussion. Thing there.
Hold on.
Whoa, yes, sir.
Jack Sandborn, sixty-four, eighty-four, Old Baghdad Highway. Did I understand the city manager to say this takes out any of the financials? This is just internal control? So there will be no financials?
Our direction was to look at internal controls, not.
We get a financial.
Yeah, we've already got a financial audit, and even actually the current audit we have looks at internal controls, but not completely fully across the board, but I mean, they.
I was going to say, I mark on their comment, we need to do this.
So there would be no financial, the existing audit that's done with the existing company in Ford Beach is the only financial part that would be done?
Correct.
You understand that? Okay.
We're not wanting to go deeper than that, or, or, I thought we were breaking down each department, not going over, I thought that, is our regular audit just go over each, each department? If I'm trying to understand that correctly?
Well, I mean, it looks at our financial records and reports and makes sure that our financial records and report meet general, um, accounting standards for reporting to the state. Uh, we can go from there.
Now, my discussion with the city manager, um, earlier today, that it's that the, uh, the service that we have contracted at our Fort Walton doesn't go as in-depth as, as what we're talking about here.
Probably not, no. This would just be someone to strictly look at all of our internal control.
Okay.
And our own, like I say, our own company had made some mentions of things that need to be.
This is something that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and, uh, do we have any further discussion? Think there is an empty vote? Peggy? And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, item eight forty-eight is another information item. This is an FDOT public hearing on the widening of Highway ninety from Seaning Highway to Glover Lane. They will be holding a public meeting on the widening of Highway ninety on Seaning Highway in Glover Lane on Thursday, February twenty-second at five thirty at the Santa Rosa County Auditorium. And that was part of, that is a committee the whole day, so if you want to look at changing your meeting or making sure we're out, whatever, just know that that meeting is not going to change, so.
Maybe we could put ours in high gear.
What we can do is if we want to, if we want to go ahead and have the meeting on that Thursday, we could, uh, you know, we could definitely recess, um, uh, or, you know, close the meeting, uh, as far as we got, or we could do a different day.
Right, or you can start early, you can move it to a different day, you can get as far as you can in that meeting and then quit and go. But we do have to advertise, like I say, we are going to have to advertise for that meeting, so we'll.
The, would, would city staff have enough time if we met the following Thursday?
Um, I'd have to look at the calendar.
That would be, um.
I would just have to, I mean, I've already taken off work, so I need to make sure I can get out of there. I mean, that's another issue for me is work.
Okay.
That would be March first.
Okay, that'd be too close.
That would probably be too close to the.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Well, um, you know, I mean, we can get in what we can try to get in. We could recess and go to the meeting and come back.
Right.
Finish then finish.
I would be okay with that.
Would you be okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
That, I've never seen that done before, but certainly, um.
Can we just move the, uh?
We could get through.
Could we just move it one day?
Sure, yeah, I just have to make.
Just, just move the committee the whole one day instead of a whole week? Yeah, whatever's good.
Heather, you said that you had, you've already scheduled your time off?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, it's just limited with me being supervisor, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, it's okay, I, I say that we give it a go, three o'clock on, uh, the twenty-second, and, uh, whatever we don't finish, we'll recess and we can readjust. Here, there's nothing illegal about that, I think that we can do.
It's a committee meeting, so you can do whatever you want.
Do we need to put that in form of a motion?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think.
You don't need to.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, you can decide what you're going to do. Like I say, it's a committee meeting, so you can decide whatever you want to do. We just have to make sure, and then there's, we do have to make sure it's advertised.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, Ricky Downs, fifty-two oh-five Hawksnest Drive. In that same meeting, that's the same, uh, hearing that they're, uh, talking about, uh, relocating or widening Glover Lane as well. Um, also, one of the things that we had talked about is the, um, Pond Creek Bridge and the two different options they have for that. Um, they, one of the ones I talked about is them taking it all the way across the water, just one big piece, um, and then have turn lanes on it, um, and that's kind of what DOT's been leaning towards. But the biggest thing, you know, obviously near and dear to my heart is the Glover Lane relocation and keeping it there and that sort of thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say?
Yes.
Um, in the advertising, it has, our committee, the whole meeting has to be advertised, but do we have to notice in the paper that there will be an adjournment at five o'clock and do we have to do that?
I think at that point, as long as whoever's here at the meeting, we notify that we're adjourning and then reconvening, um.
Okay.
I think, but we can, I'll double check and see.
With Heather, yeah, okay.
Whether we can.
Quick question, Ricky, on that, on the, on the bridge in the four lane with, uh, with Glover, is it time for that hearing that, I don't know if the council would want to make a statement of what the City of Milton would like to see there? Would that help any?
I think we better hear what they have to say first.
Or listen to what they got to say and then counteract.
You, you could, generally at these meetings, what they do is they have their board set up, they have everything set up.
Right.
Uh, you get to walk around and make comments on what their thing is. At that point, you could individually make comments, or you could generally take one of their, one of the comment cards and come back, and at this point, you as a council could, you know, write a letter, make a comment, take a stand, do whatever you want and, and forward it to, uh.
Okay, thank you.
They usually give a certain deadline to have that turned in.
Yeah, FDOT and Chipley, they usually have the, the self-addressed, they're not stamped, the self-addressed envelopes there for you to fill out. Pick one with you and decide whether you like it or not.
That's one of the things that Peggy stressed a lot, and I'm actually, I was supposed to meet with her tomorrow, and I believe I'm meeting with her Wednesday morning, just to kind of codify exactly what all of us business owners on Glover Lane want and don't want, because even with the option that we liked before, they've come in and added some things on there that we didn't really like, uh, concrete barriers down the middle of the road and, you know, all that fun stuff, so. Um, we, we think we're at, all on the same page now, and then I'm going to go and just make sure that we're, um, set, and then she said public comments, uh, whether it's email, whether it's comment cards, anything like that, and then, of course, anything, um, as a group, as a council, you know, if, um, you know, y'all can help and come to a consensus of what would help us as the city, then that would be great as well.
Thank you. A quick question, Brian, on, on Censo, it just reminded me on that, uh, the biggest atrocity with Glover Lane is the cigarette butts that keep getting thrown out into the, is there any way, are we allowed to come up with, uh, please don't throw your butts? Or, I mean, I could get a little more, but.
I mean.
At a couple of these intersections, because the.
Don't throw your butt out the window.
Well, you know, believe me, I'd like to sit there and deal with it, but, uh, you know.
I, I, I'm, I mean, you need to try to stop people from doing it.
Yeah, I mean.
We probably would have to have someone there.
Stop, it'd be great. I mean, it's, it's just crazy. There, uh.
I'd have to, probably would have to be able at that point, get people for littering, I think, whether we have a littering order.
You heard about on eighty-seven with that motorcycle.
I, yeah, that's, uh, AJ and, uh.
Yeah, Mike, Mike and, uh, and Anita Dunn's son.
Yeah, their son, so, uh, yeah. So, I mean, I know the sign, a sign wouldn't stop everybody, I mean, but is it, could we do something to kind of make them aware, hey, we know what's.
Yeah, there, there's a sign for doing it.
It'd have to be a big sign, just.
There's a sign.
It, it depends on where you're looking. In this case, obviously, if you, if you want to put it on Glover Lane, that's actually a county road.
I was sticking it right in a ditch is where I was going to stick it.
What about, and speaking of that, um, when there's wrecks in that Glover Lane and ninety right now, who picks up the debris? Because there's a bunch of debris on the side of the road from a previous wreck and it just looks tacky.
Well, we can go back and look, but generally what happens is, uh, if there's a collision, you call a wrecking company that comes in to carry off the wreck, and their job is to sweep up and clean up and get the road cleaned.
They don't and it just looks tacky, especially right there at Glover and ninety right now.
Okay.
Those are probably from all the unreported ones, Heather.
Probably.
Okay, let's move on.
Let's go.
All right, uh, next one.
AJ.
Uh, eight forty-nine, North Santa Rosa Regional Water Reclamation Facility. Uh, BDI submitted a proposal from Darnett Consulting Services, Inc. for an economic impact analysis on the North Santa Rosa Water Reclamation Facility. The, uh, input they've gotten was for twenty-five thousand, uh, and if we were to fund that, uh, I would recommend it come out of water and sewer reserves. Um, we have been meeting regularly, uh, with BDI, um, uh, Liberty Partners, uh, several organizations on working on the, we previously funded, uh, through a task order for them to help draft the application for the Triumph and the Pot Two money. Um, we made it pass, we already submitted a pre-app to Triumph. Uh, they've done their first screening, threw out a bunch that didn't meet the application requirements. Uh, we were not thrown out, we're still in the game. So, uh, what we got from the last Triumph meeting is that we would expect probably sometime in the next two to four weeks to have some correspondence from Triumph saying, hey, you need to put together a full app uh, and probably have some discussion with us about, uh, the program itself. Uh, like I say, we have been meeting with, uh, Basketville Donovan, going over the application itself. The application itself is thirty pages long, so we're cruising through that. One of the things that has been recommended here to do that is in order to look, to get them to, uh, look more favorably upon our program, to look at what the economic impact of bringing that treatment plant or having excess wastewater capacity available in this portion of the county would do to do that. Uh, and, uh, um, BDI recommends it, uh, I've talked to, um, Liberty, they think it would probably be a good idea to bolster our application. Um, I, in this case, I probably would like to talk to BDI about how we do it, but really what I look for from you, uh, is are you, is that something you're willing to look at and fund? But I, I guess for the standpoint, from my standpoint, I would probably recommend you, anything we can do to make our application, uh, shine brighter than anybody. than anybody else's is going to be for us. And as long as, forget it. So I would recommend that we do it.
Are you talking about twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
Is there any way we can get the county to bite off on some of that?
Uh, in this case, already, I've already, I, I blocked the twenty-five thousand, I started to start with. And by, depending on how we do it, we, we can, I've probably got that number down to twenty thousand already, and we'll continue to look as to whether we can kind of spread some of those costs somewhere else.
Did you put it in your budget?
Uh, no, that's why it's coming out of water sewer reserves.
I see. I was.
That might be something, I don't know what control Shannon has with his, his money, but that economic development and being where it's at.
It, it, it might be, and we will probably, I will probably have a conversation with Shannon. But the other thing about it is, the more people we bring in, the more people we put in, the less control we have over the product.
I, I make a motion, we didn't, we give you the authority to do this.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Motion from Councilman Lowry, second Councilman Hathaway, discussion.
Yeah, um, no, it, it's fine, but I was just going to ask, Brian, if we get to where we have starting to use it like a month, I know we've got six-month reserve, we get to where we start pulling out, there's been several things pulled out of the reserves, we get close to that one month, are you going to let us know, right?
Yes, I will let you know. Actually, the water sewer system is actually in very good shape.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? If there is none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, item eight fifty is the Navy League Sailor of the Year Flight Instructor of the Year banquet. Annual Navy League Sailor of the Year Flight Instructor of the Year banquet will be held on February twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen at the Santa Rosa County Auditorium. We have sponsored a table, we have six tickets.
Oh.
And would like to offer them to anyone on the council that would like to go. So if you'll let Pam know who wants to go, we'll work that. If we need additional tickets, we'll, we'll get more.
Is that accountant for spouse, or do we need to pay, didn't we pay for that last year?
Uh, I'll be honest with you, I don't know. But in this case, I'll tell you, if you want us to take spouse, I don't have a problem with paying for.
I'm, I'm gonna take a spouse, too. But I'll pay for the ticket if we need to, so whatever.
Is the pilot banquet, you said?
Yes, well, actually, it recognizes the sailors of the year and the flight instructors of the year, so.
It, the base doesn't have as many people to do two separate, two separate celebrations and have them to the level that they like to have them. So they combine them.
I went last year, it was very impressive what these guys get done. I mean, I was in awe of them, and they, they deserve our support, at least to know that City of Milton, widening field is thirty percent of Santa Rosa County, so we need to support them.
Um, we, we, I, I think the Navy League has done a very good job, and they've gotten a lot of sponsorships, and I think we'll make it through no deal. The real issue that we're pushing now is to try to get as many community representatives there, because we'd like to, when they get up and they're awarded, and this, become the Flight Instructor of the Year or the Sailor of the Year is not a light thing. I mean, it, these, if you read their, the things that they've done to get that achievement, it is a ton of work.
Very impressive.
Very impressive, and we would love to have as many of the community leaders as possible there to recognize them at that.
Can I bring my grandson? I'll pay for his table.
Sure.
How much is the chair?
The individual tickets are thirty dollars apiece.
Thirty dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll ask him, and I'd like for him to come.
Is that the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, it's on our paper.
Okay, so let Pam know. Item eight fifty-one is budget planning calendar for FY two thousand and nineteen. A proposed budget planning calendar is provided for review and approval. Staff recommends approval of the budget planning calendar as provided. What you'll see in there, really, the big items that come on that is to look at the September dates, which is where we have to schedule, we have to schedule two meetings in September in order to get first and second readings of all of our deals. We also cannot hold our meeting on the night the school board or the county are holding theirs, and the school board, I think it's, the school board gets to pick first, the county picks second, and then we have to take what's left. So we have worked out and talked to them, and the dates that we're looking here are the ones that meet all of the requirements of getting enough distance between the two, we don't step on anybody's toes, and we go from.
All right, I have yet to find that in this packet. Oh, wait. There we go.
Need a, a motion to approve those?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I got a motion from Councilman Lowry, second Councilman Snow, discussion. Saying there is none, please vote.
I'm still trying to find.
Back in the back.
Yeah, it's eight fifty-one.
Eight fifty-one, please vote.
It's, I'm, I keep hitting the button, but it's not working.
You have to hit it twice.
Well, you just gotta, I, I, I've changed, we've changed every component on the thing.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, item eight fifty-two is an alternate for the Bark representative. The Bay Area Resource Council bylaws allow for each city member of the Bay Area Resource Council to designate a proxy. Person with the proxy must either be an elected official or the chief administrator of the same member city. So in this case, we had, looking to get, I think Councilman Lowry is our primary member, and we just need an alternate.
This, we've had troubles trying to get quorums for these meetings, and it's important that we have a alternate in case I can't make.
Forgive me, but what is Bark?
Bay Area.
Bay Area Resource Council. Now, the Bay Area Resource Council, in the past, basically just kind of dealt with environmental issues. I think the importance of the Bay, of the Bay Area Resource Council now is with the approval and the work to establish an estuary program for the Pensacola Bay, all of the, really, they are looking to have the Bay Area Resource Council kind of be the conduit by which all of the environmental programs that are funded, or looking for funding through the restore, basically restore pots of money would kind of flow and be coordinated through the Bark.
I'll be glad to do that.
It's, um.
In Pensacola, of course.
It's a, yeah, okay.
All right.
We need it.
We do need to make a motion if you want to pick, Councilwoman Smith?
Peggy Smith, be my alternate.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Lowry, second Councilman Snow, discussion. Saying there is none, please vote. And Jeff's got to vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. All right. Item eight fifty-three is a memorandum of agreement with a hope for Santa Rosa County, Inc. to manage the community cat colonies. City Council approved the establishment of a trap neutral release program to control the community cat population of the city. Vote for Santa Rosa County, agreed to manage the program. You've got a draft of a memorandum of understanding in there, so, I think we got the draft, did we get? Yeah, okay, it's in there.
Eight fifty-three.
Uh, it's in there, and we have a draft of a, of a memorandum of understanding for approval with a hope for Santa Rosa.
Put that in motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion, taking Councilwoman Hathaway, discussion.
Brandy, I'm assuming you're happy with this?
Who?
Who?
Okay, just checking.
All right, any further discussion? Saying there is none, please vote. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, eight fifty-four is a resolution in support of a Milton multimodal connector. This is, staff has developed a concept for a multimodal connector within the downtown area for submission to TP over funding. Staff recommends approval of the concept of Milton multimodal connector and reading of the resolution.
Just the sidewalk.
This is the sidewalks, starts from Stewart Street, works all the way down, connects us back in to, down by Gilbash Park.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Lowry, second Councilman, no discussion. Saying there is none.
Can't.
All those in favor, oh, there we go. Push the button, push something, couple.
No, I'm not crazy. No.
Maybe a little.
There it is, unanimous, it passes.
All right, thank you. Item eight fifty-five is a contract with Municho for utility bill outsourcing. City issued RFP for outsourcing the city utility billing. After reviewing all proposals, selected Municho to provide the service. A draft of their contract is provided for your review, and would like to sign that contract to get moving with Municho.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Lowry, second Councilwoman Luntz, for discussion. If there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. All right. Item eight fifty-six, King Middle School Sidewalk Project. City in conjunction with Santa Rosa County was awarded a Safe Route to Schools grant to install sidewalks for King and Hobbs Middle Schools. City will have to fund the cost of right-of-way acquisition. The council had previously approved up to seventy-five thousand dollars for the right-of-way acquisition. We are in the process of doing that, and they have moved to the point of where we need to begin the right-of-way acquisition process. Several things have happened, one of which is when they developed the program, and the initial estimates were based on only five properties needing to be, have a right-of-way acquisition. When they got through the design, there was actually eight, so they've increased the cost of the project. It was from originally about fifty thousand up to like seventy-six thousand now, plus we still have to add the price of the land, negotiate the cost. So we do need to increase at least up to seventy-seven thousand just to cover the cost of a contract to do the negotiation. Now, in addition, I believe I forwarded to everyone the package that needs to be approved and forwarded to the landowner. The big issue there is, in order to do this, in order to get this, the program and grant funding by DOT to do this, the pro, the acquisition process has to be done using FDOT rules and guideline. And in that process, I've read the letter, I made the comment on there, it does say the process that they use is, they will negotiate, try to do every good faith effort to negotiate a price with the landowners, and then, but with DOT, if they can't negotiate a price, then at some point in time, the city would have to go to condemnation or, or to do that. So really, at this point, is if you're going to do this and get this, you need to decide whether that's something that you're going to do. If at some point, I mean, we're pretty far along in this process, if, if that's not some action you'll take, then we can take it out, and then you're either going to have to pay the price that they, whatever the end game price is, or the project will be lost from lack of meeting their requirement.
Is that process different than domain, Heather?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Condemnation is eminent domain, yes.
Is eminent domain, right.
So, and I informed the people involved that it's our understanding that typically the City of Milton does not want gauge in that process.
That's ugly.
So they are aware of the concern that's been raised in the past. The alternative was to take out the reference to condemnation language in this letter, which Brian has been asked to sign, but the downside to that is, it's really not a good idea, because the FDOT materials that have to go in this package reference condemnation, so we don't want to be misleading. So we, we want it to include this, but at the same time, we need to know what your concerns are, so we can be clear.
And, and I think if we take out the condemnation portion of the letter, then I think we would be on shaky ground if at some point in time we did want to do that, because we did not inform them, you know. So at that point, it would basically be off the table. Now, the bottom line is, you can put it in there, and then, you know, we're talking, just, we're talking eight property owners. Now, we can put it in, we can notify them, it doesn't mean that you have to do it. It's just, you're just going to, how much you can, how much money you're willing to put in to get it.
Are those eight properties on Byram's?
Uh, there's some on Byram, I think there's one on Queen, I think, I think there's one on Queen.
So we're good on, we're good on Glover?
Yeah, Glover, there's no right-of-way requirement on Glover, it's good to go.
Okay.
If, if we don't, just to, if we don't have that in there, then, well, or by having that in there, you can have them negotiate fairly.
Correct.
And if you don't have it, then they can string it out and ask for whatever they want. So that's, that's why you, you really want that in there.
Correct. I, I, I mean, as, as tough as it is, I think we leave it in there because it keeps the options open.
Is FDOT doing the negotiation?
No, it's FDOT policies and rules and procedures. But in order to do that, the way that FDOT requires that is we had to hire a contractor. It's all run through the county, because we're not LAP certified in the city to do this. So the county, it's really the county doing it, and we're reimbursing the county for that, for the stuff that's, the right-of-way acquisition that is inside the City of Milton. So in this case, their process is, you have to go out, credibly bid, get a contractor to carry out their process, they have to meet their goals and standards to do that, and that's where we are. Volker was select, was, the RFP went out, Volker was selected, they did the design, and they are now into the right-of-way acquisition process.
We're, we're working very closely with a dozen person from Volker. I, I have total confidence in him. He's, he's the one who drafted this letter and drew this to our attention and made sure that we, you know, that could happen.
So you need that in a motion to keep it in?
Yes, sir.
I'll put that in a motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilman, oh, second Councilwoman Johnson, discussion.
What ward are we talking about?
Pardon?
Well, this is, this is King Middle.
It's Byram Street north of.
Parts of, parts of two and three and four.
We'll just blame Sharon.
Yeah.
I wrote it, Brian, I can tell you about it if you want to know.
Yeah. Really, what will happen here is because we're, they, they're on a very tight timeline to make sure that we meet DOT, to keep the DOT funding. Tonight, really what we're looking for is if you'll approve this, because I need to sign that letter and get it back to them, so that they can get them to property owners, and we're going to meet our guideline.
This was brought up originally from Marilyn Jones, the first time I remember hearing about it, and she's been gone for a long time.
That's right. On, on, on what?
This, this whole project was, Marilyn made the announcement that, that we had gotten it, and that.
It's, it's, yeah, we've been, we've been working on this for a very long time.
Let's get it done.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Saying there is none, please vote. And. Motion passes unanimously.
So, so with that, I will tell you, I will probably sign that letter tomorrow, get it out.
Oh, he's got it all anchored up.
Okay. There's some pressure on us to move, so thank you.
Oh, I, I see that.
All right. Item eight fifty-seven is Carpenter Park Master Plan Public Meeting. The city will hold a public meeting on the Carpenter's Park Master Plan on Monday, February twelfth at six to eight PM on the concept plans for the park. They've got three bubble charts from all the input that they've got from everybody, and they're going to come back and hold another meeting to get additional input on the final of those plans.
Are we having snack? Are we having snack?
I guess if you want snacks, we'll have them, but.
It'll be in, the meeting will be in here?
Right.
Okay.
I think it's right here.
Have we advertised for it?
We don't normally advertise, but, but we are putting it out and letting everybody know that we're having the meeting, but it's, right.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, where are we putting? The calendar and the city's Facebook page?
I think we were on Facebook page, we.
Social media, Milton Local, and the, the company that's, that's contracted with the city.
Yeah, PSW.
They've also been advertising as well.
All right, what about the people, the closest, physically connected to Carpenters? Is there more than two of them? Not really?
Hmm, no, probably just one, really. It's physically connected to it.
Well, I mean, the whole area, you know, so Shannon Hardy and a couple of people across the street, one on the back end.
Right, and there'd be some people on the north, on the north side of Munson Highway, probably across there.
What about the nursing home at the Marina and those little apartments there?
Well.
You don't want their input?
No, I, I think we're happy for anybody to show up.
Like, let me rephrase that. Do we feel an obligation, is it going to be that impactful to them, or not at this game?
At, at anything, I think, if this were to work for a dinner, all we're going to do is make things better for everybody.
Better, it's an improvement.
Right, but we're not expanding the, the footprint of the park.
No, sir, we're not expanding the footprint of the park, no ma'am.
We're not into the Riverwalks?
No, 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 no ma'am. It's in the confines of the current Carpenters.
You know, you guys show me these giant maps with all this swell stuff, and I'm like, are we there yet? No.
Get them to advertise that, or not?
Certainly.
Just because not everybody's on social.
It went out in a press.
It went out in a press release on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't guess I subscribe to that.
Okay, so that's another, um.
It's for the press.
You got an additional item?
Yes, that's another information item for you, the last one is eight fifty-nine, is a resolution requesting reduced permit application fees for the wastewater treatment plant. We are re-permitting the existing wastewater treatment plant. Uh, each year, we can request that the re-permitting fee is four thousand, or five thousand dollars. We can request, uh, to have a reduced fee, which will take it down to nothing, though, but we have to, uh, put a resolution and, and fill out the form, basically showing why we, uh, get that, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, just do the resolution.
We have a motion to approve by Alan Lowry, second, from Councilman, was it, Councilman Holly? Pat Lunsford, Councilman Lunsford, okay, discussion. Saying there is none, please vote. And the motion passed, and finally, we have, uh, under, on page ten, utter persons to appear. If you want to hear today, like, speak to the Milton City Council, but item, uh, not found on the agenda, if so, please approach the microphone, state your name and address record, please, and welcome to the city of Milton. Saying no one wants to speak to us, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, yeah. I was trying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I was, I was like, oh, no, you just moved that off.
Hi. Oh, thank, okay. Actually, I'm sure they have some.
So, Casey? Casey usually does.
Committee of the whole, or committee council? When do you commit to the whole?